The honourable members of parliament, where they represent, we people them, the vice-chancellors and principals, all them want them, where they take education business good before, we call stakeholders, and the students them, especially the university students them, and all we salon fumble them. Of course, I get permission, for law go carry this session, and everybody for talk in Creole. So that, that man me, within Abacha Street, with the Bunt Island, with the Kailan, or Kogola, Gueyere, waiting with the talk boat this morning, even that fish man me, because education business, buclanning business, now all man business, now this country, as President Biou see. So we don't beg them professor them, for bear we, and not forgive me them big, big grandmother then today, and I think we get that concession day for move on. We then I ask so this morning, for law we talk together, now we get a proper conversation, how we for able for make education and development now this country sidom, fine, fine one. We also want for see, how we go make sure say this development in education, we able for make salon go before, as we President Bu done the lead from the front. We all know say we come into power in 2018, he put everything aside and say education, now for focus on land book business, now go drive this country go before. So identify waiting and call, for let not a man get the skill, get the knowledge, the master sabi, for move the country go forward, we then call human capital development. So, and we don't see say plenty development don't go on, we don't see the money we don't put in to education, where they make people, they not they pay school fee again, so begin then they get food now school, then get transportation, that they give them, textbooks them, also we don't get more teachers them, so we need for build on that. For let that happen, the colleges they need for they in a position for able for take that key responsibility, they for let this country go change and change for good, and for let that change they happen, with college and universities them, with technical vocational institutions them, need for they at the front and for make sure say then sidom fine and well. Of course, we know say government don't put this plenty money, twenty-two percent, with the support of development partners them also. So today, nobody know they will get this responsibility for move this forward, past the universities them, for move on forward, because now then they receive the end product. We don't see say universities them, for let education day, it get all thing where it need, waiting and call quality, from teaching learning materials and lecturers them, and for let the students then get what in they need. You go need money, you go need the resources for able for do that, for get quality, especially in what you we call the twenty-first century, the salon, for make sure say institutions them, they not only they take begin then for go through, for numbers, but then get the quality there with for compete, and then fit for purpose, for drive this country in go before one, and for also compete internationally. Today, we they make history, under the minister, and under President Bu, leadership, because I ensure we the light, the vision, for move before this nation. For the very first time, we they get an inclusive talk, together, fumble talk, we they come together and forget and see, how together we go work and take ownership of this process, and say government business, now all man business, for move on forward, for address the problem, the challenges they move on they face. We be done then at this country some time, and the college they lock, school they lock, but we not see that again, we all they manage, we they put hand for move on forward, so now all man business done they. So, we get people them, we get the right expertise, we don't do this for years, the lecturers them, the agencies, and the development partners them, they come together today for talk now the panel, and we go focus on for law now understand, what thing they go on, how we don't they manage with the universities then for push thing forward, so we go talk about that. We go also look at say, you know, the world, across board, things they very difficult, what can we do for ensure say, we get the requisite money, the things they will need for drive things, and let them go forward, for law education sidom fine, fine one at this country, for law restore replace. We also talk about how the institutions then, based on how you they perform in terms of quality, in terms of producing good products, now so you will get more money, so we the challenge with institutions then, for push that forward, which we call performance-based financing, based on best practices. We also go address waiting at the today issues, President Bu don't pay for begin then at school, you don't provide textbooks, you don't feed them, how they go go college, how parents they go, we forget that resources they, for pay the tuition fees. If we pay small money, we not go get that quality there, so we want law engage, now we talk together and say, you know what, now we pay the right fee, so that we will get the right education, and this country go benefit, so how we for ease them up, so that people then go benefit, so we will talk about that. And also I think, me for welcome on a, now this historic institution, for a big college, in two years' time, we would celebrate two hundred years, what would we show? This conversation go show we the light there on moving forward. So this productive engagement, I tell now plenty thank you, I tell the Ministry of Information and Civic Education, plenty thank you, for put hand on that we for move this process forward. At this stage, I welcome on a all, and I go ask that, with tenap, and say the national pledge. Thank you very much, you can be seated, we can sidom, sorry, I didn't say we go forget that sleep day, now me no ma allow forget that sleep day. So now, I can bring to the table, the people them, where they can carry forward, this fumble talk, who they can talk. The first person, now the person, we go talk to the panelists then, for bring out the main business we do here for, the quality education, how we go finance them. The moderator for this session, now somebody when I is skilled politician, and a communication expert, now one of the face and voice of government and communication business now this country. Now key staff, now waiting and call the strategic communication unit, now the Ministry of Information and Civic Education. I the, please, where I call on my clap forum, no other person but me and brother, Eman Sihah. My first guest, now the panel, now from the Ministry of Finance, this ministry are a very crucial ministry, on this conversation here, so we can get, because forever, now they always they go to for money business, so I go welcome Dr. Aylera Madle, Deputy Director of Budget. The next panel is, now somebody, we don't spend all in life, bambooclanning business, part of in current role, now for ensure say, universities then, higher education institutions then comply to the law, and then ensure say, they give something when of quality, we better they inside it. And not to know other person, now in fact, now the person this, when they split, they call it the university, Osualeo Informjala University, now been the first vice chancellor and principal, no other person, but when at the chair, Professor Aliyagin Mohammed Al Ghali, when at the chair of the Tashari Education Commission. University lecturer them, very important, on this talk here, so this fumble talk, who they talk. Now that make, we bring together, somebody, when I in a the president for the union of the university, union of university staff association, so all the colleges then, the union president, now who they talk to, now they talk to me, no other person but me and brother, Dr. Burma Gebbe, president of... This conversation, now but university them. And the university there also, the vice chancellor and principal by law, when I then they lead, they get a young person, they say you were wearing shoes, now you didn't know how you the burn you, because now they may have the frontline, they know how they pass pass for ensure say, college open on time, exam day on time, the mark describes them. And the representative now this panel today, not to know other person, but now a professor, We need for ask we serve the question, say, private university then different from public university then, or they serve the same challenges then, or sustainability? Now the panel, which way, we get a representative from the private university then, where the Reverend Doctor George Anesbanger, from the University of Wakeni. Student then, now we, now the end users then, of the service with the university then they offer, then are the primary client, where the university they provide for. We know say when students they not get what in they want, they go always cry, but we tell God thank you say, they also understand, say they get a responsibility, shared responsibility, for take President Bu agenda forward. So today, we get the president of the National Union of Students, Mohamed Rox Bonifat. On the panel, we get the most important stakeholder, on this education business, the one we many carry all the headache, but get our resilience there for smile, and President Bu in belief in woman them, say they go carry the load capably, we get we own minister, no other person, the Minister of Technical and Higher Education, Dr. Hajar Romatroye, we go deliver the keynote address for lead we into this fumble talk this afternoon, this morning, sorry.
Thank you very much to the Deputy Minister of Technical and Higher Education, and good morning, ladies and gentlemen. In the interest of time, I the ask Lord allow me for stand on existing protocols, but I are very, very happy for say, with this town hall, we don't a plan for weeks, it don't happen today. It's very timely, because we want for make sure say, we bring all the relevant stakeholders then, into one room, before the start of the next academic year, we'll talk on this very, very important topic, about the cost of quality higher and technical education, when a collective responsibility means in a all man business. But I go start without saying plenty, plenty thank you, to the Ministry of Information and Civic Education, where they don't really support we follow plan this, they don't walk tirelessly behind the scenes, for let this event happen so today. I also want for thank me ministry, the Ministry of Technical and Higher Education, because they serve walk tirelessly, me I just show up no more today, but I really want for tell them thank you for the continued support, as we they work together for transform higher education as salon. We know why we there, the Deputy Minister don't tell we why we there so. This conversation on quality higher and technical education is very, very important, because now in they reflect on how we they develop with human capital, and with human capital is essential for growth and sustainability for any country. We know say now salon, the government, the current government, under the leadership of His Excellency President Bu, always don't place priority on education. For the first five years of intern, free quality school education have been a flagship program, and for the next five years, human capital development now continued priority. And we all know about the, the, the big five game changers them, if you look through all of them, feed salon, youth employment scheme, human capital development, digitalization technology, revamping the public sector, for me, what in they, where you want across all of them, now young people them, because His Excellency know say, any country, the most valuable asset of any country now in young people them, and if we not invest in them, we not go able get the returns on that investment. And we ministry, the Ministry of Technical and Higher Education, we get for protect the investment, where the government already put into free quality school education, we don't know, we all know what in that they mean, the finance, the team, the money where can stop, start in beginning for access education, at basic and senior secondary level, we don't pull on, we get for protect that investments there. What you have you always say, where you de bill us? The end goal now forget us, you de build the foundation, we build the foundation, you de left hand so, you no left hand so, you de go up, you de go up, you de roof, you finish you us, you furnish and you go inside, there you don't get what you set out for do. And now then the Ministry of Technical and Higher Education, the government value education, but we value even more, now quality education, because quality education, they ensure say, we young people them, we they give them the academic, the technical skills, the soft skills, where they need, for let them be good professionals then, for let them take their rightful place for drive socioeconomic development now we country, and support the country in national development plan. So this conversation for we, within the ministry, it they give we the platform for let we pause, then we reflect, on usa we don't come off form, and usa we want for go, and then collectively, we look at all waiting day, waiting at the thing that we don't do as a sector collectively, and see how we can raise the bar. For ensure say, we reach that end goal of quality education, we being with technical and higher educational institutions, we protect the investment of the free quality school education, and most importantly, we give we young people then the skills then, where they need, for let they serve become a positive agency within we country. So, as I say earlier, we the pause, we reflect, we raise the bar. As we they reflect, we they look on the gains they make within the ministry, not just under met tenure, but even before me go de, a lot has been, don't happen, within the ministry, and also the hard work of the university staff then, that are then we they build upon. For example, we all, some of we go down, I we ask say, the Ministry of Technical and Higher Education recognize say, we want for train we young people, and for speak to the current labor market, we don't want for let them go through universities of vocational training, only for let them graduate, and then the labor market say, the skills owner gets, not what they want. So for do that there, we do a labor market survey, where we go back to the national development plan, and we identify sectors there within our national development plan, where we don't call growth sectors, we go to the industry players then, both in the public and the private space, and ask them, waiting at the skills they wanna want for see, in young people then graduate, we they use that information now, for go back to the curriculum of their sectors then eh, and see say, how we can, is there any mismatch there, if you do, how we they make sure say we correct them. So that way there, we the train we young people then, for let them be in demand, where they graduate, because they get the skills they where the job market want. They also go support the government in youth employment scheme, for create five hundred thousand jobs for young people then, then they go make sure, how we go about for do that there, we don't talk with industry players then, we don't make them now, let them know say, they serve now partners then, collective responsibility now all they find this, so they can allow we students eh for do placement, and who da know whose good work, we confident eh we students eh, we go do good work, and one or two must say, alright, we graduate can work with we. We also, they get partnerships then, for strengthening quality within we system, using digitalization, one of the five key priorities of the government. Currently, the ministry they talk to two big organization then, for help we further develop we education management system, and we quality management system, so quality management system, that's one thing we do inside we national development plan, and combined, this education management system and quality management system will give we data, where go help we for inform whose policies they will need, whose areas they will need for strengthen, whose interventions they will need for come up with, because data very important, for no know who to do. We also, they ensure say, we get equitable access, what you I mean by that there, regardless of who say you do, if we able access education. We get universities then, for example, we know say Kono University, we don't me get Kono na the, university now, now that region, we don't set up one, we they look for money for set up another university in the northern province, Ameti Jankaba University. We also are where I say, not for just set up physical infrastructure, the world now now digital learning, we go one organization, we we in a part of Commonwealth of Learning, where don't support the ministry through the Tashari Education Commission for develop a open distance learning policy, where go allow we, for no say begin offer programs them online, for we students then. But we know say, we not want for further disadvantage anybody, because what you I mean by that there, who can't introduce distance learning, then one student in our remote village, he say I not get internet for access, they will not really achieve much. So we also work with other partners then, we get to organization, what they call Wakren, who we work with, for see how we can bring sustainable internet connectivity, to all we higher educational institutions then, and allow them for connect to regional experts then, within the West African subregion, so that there now ongoing conversation. Recently, we meet with Starlink, for see how we can add that there to that conversation there, because what we want, now for let it be sustained, we don't want for make internet today to my inaudible, because if we go digital, for the introduce digital learning platforms, they will go for make sure say, all man able access them. But with all of them gains here, and so much more, we get challenges they who they face, and then challenge yeah, so we for face them together, because are the only way that there we go on the solution then, and then in so doing, we de raise the bar. Some challenge them, physical infrastructure, in terms of, forget, for example, teaching laboratories within we universities then, equipment then within we universities then. We also, we know say, we lecturers, that we need for support them in terms of capacity building, so create that environment, and for let them able capacitate themselves. All them plans say, oh, they do so, they fine, but the mental need for that there now resources then, in addition to so many things then, I the go back to the example where you de bill us, who all know say you de bill us, who say the money there, now for the finishing, where you de build you us, where you de finish, and I think you de spend the money, the Ministry of Technical and Higher Education, now they de finishing there for young people then, so we need money, we need money within we ministry, and now the only way that there we go ensure say, what we set out for do, for make sure say, we get, we young people then, for take ownership for, drive this country go before, we achieve them. The ministry don't set up a technical and higher education fund, for complement the government's effort. The government's currency, they spend twenty-two percent of a national budget for education, for both ministries. Recent, in the Ministry of Finance, to introduce a one percent education tax levy, for add to that there, but if we talk unrealisticly, even that there say, you know enough for what we want for do within the, within the sector, so I make we serve don't come up with a technical and higher education fund, when a sustainable way, and we the try for see low, allow many other different routes then, for we go get money, we go use for address then challenges they also will get, within we, we sector, and build upon the gains they would already achieve within the sector. But all man get role for play, this the ministry get your role for play, the universities then get a role for play, they need for see how they can diversify their income streams then, and bring more internally generated funds then, within the institutions then, with a challenge and for embark upon business ventures, for see how they can use research and commercialize this, their research findings then, and we they also see how we can use and link this back to quality. We earlier, the Deputy Minister talk about performance-based financing, where as the name implies, performance-based financing, based on how you perform, now say you de get money from this technical and higher education fund, where they come up with indicators then, we link to a national development plan, we link to other regional and global education agenda that we know about, agenda twenty-sixty-three, the SDGs, we come up with indicators then, and we score we universities then, based on how they perform, they they go able access money from the fund, but also you can help them, for let them know how they can work together, if one university they struggle some side, the other they do well, we now learn from each other, for see how we all go go together. But, as I know, we don't say repeatedly, collective responsibility, all man get role for play, how the ministry get role, the universities then get role, all the other stakeholders then in this room get role, especially students then, when it come for tuition fees, now that there now the one big challenge we would get within the sector, and if we could get all them, well, them best laid plans there, but if we not get the resources then, if we not make, if the students and serve not value the education, where we try for provide, the quality, where we try for provide, then a problem. So we use this platform, for look at frank conversations about the implications where students eh not pay the tuition fees, and that thing where we not, we not go shy away from them, this now, we they talk them in a very transparent manner, we can't shy away from them. I go use Kono University as an example, new university, I meet the, the leadership a few weeks ago, and then they tell me say, new university, and I reach thirty percent of the students eh we don't pay tuition fees, we need for address that there, it cannot continue that way there, we need for value the quality education, where we they try for bring within the sector, and this now collaborative responsibility, only, now that only way they we all go on this thing, tomorrow, not to even if, when we achieve that goal, we all go glad, for say, we universities then, then they do exactly what in they want for do. Last year, we organized with Hitnabo, we called stakeholders then back, and I remember, the students then, they say, we not, not for say we don't want pay fees oh, we not, we not, we not there against pay tuition fees, but for be quality education, we are there then eh, now we could on do all them tear, so they embark on all them partnership here, all the initiatives they have to, for bring the quality, where they ask we for, and we believe say, they serve go match their commitment where they don't make see, then go pay the tuition fees, because we all get for work together, one person not go left behind, we for go hand in hand, for move the education sector forward. On that note, I the end me keynote, and I want for tell we now plenty thank you for who on a come, on a take, on a timeout for join we this morning, and I want for draw on attention to the screen, where we will see a short video from His Excellency President Julio Madabiu, where they talk about the importance of education for everyone, when I the use we kugareya so today, plenty thank you. Now to...
In the twenty-first century, you na nothing, if you not get something like that. If you not get something like that, when a, when that vocational, technical, or maybe move, we not able believe for value at this twenty-first century. Education they transform the least passing thing, for make, make able achieve, or reach the greatest potential, through education. Where we come, we not only recognize that, we also recognize them because of policy. Good people they may, we know them need, they may even send them beginning then eh, we make a turn we enjoy, and say, me Papa God me, and provide school fees for all the beginning, and nobody not go live here. But that free quality education we promise, not a blood for me, not a necessity, not a necessity, not a week, no more waiting at the sitting essence. In fact, the last result they wait for, 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 um, Rbeka, and, um, Mas, Alaba, wait back for those soon, and they get the best result. Which means say, if we give opportunity to people then, they give them a lot, you expect them for this then eh, because we are all global citizens, if you get able to be part of that global citizenship eh, you for...
I will, I will, I will, I will stop this small bit.
Okay.
But again, just make one particular statement before forget. You know, as, as the generation they change. You see say, the, the, uh, the, the, what's in the, the generations they demand? And their own outlook to life, it change completely. On the way this morning, I remember say, oh, me now, yeah, Generation X, nineteen sixty five, then in the day. And the way they perceive things, and today we, we call them the, uh, the Generation Alpha. We got all the tool under their hand. Their own perception to the way things have run is different. But we'll come to that, we'll begin to look at the, the next segment of discussion then. Make a just live and so for me colleagues then.
Alright, okay, thank you very much. I'll cover to you right away, uh, Reverend Dr. George Anes Bamanja. Uh, you represent private universities. Within our experience in terms of, uh, uh, some of which we know say now, uh, the challenges when it comes to, uh, public universities then. And how own are they, how own are they cope, right? Uh, because I should say, all of the turnover they would get now, right? Where you get you five was, and they go university, not only, uh, Professor Edwin, they no more, they face that challenge there also. On ourself, they face that because the numbers, they go everywhere, right? Especially once now tertiary higher level. Within our own, how own are they cope? How own are they dealing with their own financing issues there now? And within our own prospects, maybe we can learn a thing or two in terms of, uh, within, how, how own are seen things for the future?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, and good morning all. Uh, one thing I want immediately say, that we are private universities, no means say, we do something completely different from what in the public universities they do. God so good, we have just one tertiary education commission in this country. And then they supervise, oversee everything we do. So basically, we run the same thing, we do everything, and we compare notes very closely, which is a very good thing. But then, one big difference between we private universities and public universities, are the fact that we not receive subvention from government. So we have to go it our own way. And the main source of income are the tuition fees, which the minister rightly noted, Professor Romo rightly noted, you know, they come readily. It's so difficult. But apart from that, again, there are times you get benefactors from one or two places. You have friends who say, okay, we see the good work you are doing, let us see how we will help you now. And they can, but that's, you know, they come regularly, not just, and it's not reliable, you know, count on that. Therefore, what if we do follow able sustain? See, from we fees where we get, now they virtually they try to do everything. But then, apart from that, we get units, where they try for walk around and bring small income for the university. We gets the social business developer, SPD, where they into poultry. And it's one of the biggest and la- or largest in this country. It will produce now, as I speak, over twelve thousand eggs per day. So that they help in some way. And this is an idea where we the sell out to other universities and government officials. Let we see how we replicate this in all the places, because we support a lot. Another thing we're doing to now, just begin, uh, aquaculture. Develop the aquaculture. We get fisheries, who they develop, uh, fish ponds, who develop around the surroundings, for see how we go able raise something also from that. Then we're doing to small and medium businesses also. If you enter, just entering the Unimac campus, the Fatima campus of the University of Makeni, you see there are front buildings, and then the university get them, they rent them out to people, to business people. We will, the money not be cool, definitely. But when it is constant, it adds something definitely to, to the growth and development, okay? When we start, we to be able plan a bank draft. Go to the bank, the VC will go, make negotiations, then give small thing even for primary teachers. But the time we know that the university they grow, the students population, they grow, it's multiplying fast. And you don't, just don't give me the, the, the statistics of what they happen, how this thing is going so fast. And if you look at that statistics, statistics, we see say we get a greater challenge, for we come together. That's why this is all the more relevant, Mr. Minister. That we come together and hand get on how we go face this challenge. Education is a need. It's an obligation on the part of government, sorry. Not obligation from government, but we serve. Gets a role for play. Every family, every picking, everybody, we mean good for himself and for the other person, and for the country as a whole, for no say, you get to put hand together, whether public or private, for make sure say, education go before. The challenge, now, how will you raise the money? Things become, things they become difficult from time to time. And another challenge we will get, government, they pay even the lecturers for the private universities, okay? We don't take away a huge chunk from the daily expenses. We know they envy you now, but we feel pity you more. Because if you look at the numbers we're getting, it's about three or four times what we get. The students rule the challenge. So the challenge, definitely, as you say, the contribution from Ministry of Finance, they reduce every, the quota they reduce every day. Which means they send a signal to them, say, hey, it is time for all brace up. And that's what they try for do now.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, I mean, I know they no say, on how they do eggs as one of the means for able for. And I think useful, eh? Because for me, I think it shows, on how they think outside the box. Right, in terms of, uh, not just relying on the traditional means, then students then come, then pay. Uh, thankfully, uh, government, they pay, uh, on a lecturer as them. Uh, and I, hmm?
No, sorry.
Did you not say so?
Government will pay lecturers nothing, now we will pay all.
Oh, now they pay on a lecture as them, okay. So let's just get that point declared. Uh, but there are no say for public institutions then, uh, where I say, uh, there is seventy-five percent commitment, also. I mean, as part of the last conversation, what they get with lecturers then, over a period of three years. There are no say, uh, Ministry of Finance then commitment supposed to be twenty-five percent also, every year for a period of three years in terms of salary increase for, uh, for lecturers then. The three years done done, okay. The three years is finished, okay. I mean, that was a commitment, these were things we talked about, right? So worthwhile for I mention again, because I know say, uh, uh, as part of government in support, right? I know say that is something that government gave a commitment for, and that is something our government definitely don't do over the period. I will come to, uh, Dr. Elara, Deputy Director of Budgets, at the Ministry of Finance. Uh, in all of them conversations there are, you don't hear it from, uh, Professor Edwin and, uh, Reverend Dr. George Bamanja, uh, on, within now government in contribution and that then get a sense that, uh, you know, they like, I've been did it, sort of, slowly, right? Uh, just give me your own sense, right, in terms of, uh, those challenges, right? And but then also, uh, within now my own view, in terms of support, right, to tertiary higher education overall, broadly speaking.
Thank you, thank you very much for the question. Um, I bring good greetings from the leadership of the Ministry of Finance. Um, this kind of conversation very important, because you go and show say, whatever our pool now, in include all the voices way related to higher education. It should say this ministry and the government very consultative, and I value the voice especially of parents then, and, um, students, and when they use the education service. Um, in terms of government done they do Boku for support higher education, of course, the minister highlights say, it has been part of the government's agenda, et cetera. Um, mainly, we the support the ministry, we the support with subvention and payment of their staff, we the support the universities with subventions, payment of salaries since twenty nineteen. You talk about the, um, the salary increase where governments may promise, we don't do that there. We do twenty-five percent in twenty twenty-one and fifty percent in twenty twenty-two. And all the other institutions, including, um, professor institution, we government, they support, we, they push, higher education go before, now this country, we don't do this. However, that it's not without its challenges. Um, the subvention, sometimes not they come, when you for come, and not agree for say the subvention, then don't they go down? We've been trying to provide even more support, but there are challenges. Governments, in fact, as a governments, we serve, 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 serve. They look towards other forms of financing, for finance, we on operations. So the Ministry of Finance, we, they go into thinking about climate financing, partnering with the public, with the private sector. Um, these are all things then, as a governments, where we they think about. So, we they also encourage the universities or, you know, all the institutions they involve, for that they all serve, serve, look to other forms of financing. I want to also add in terms of the sustainability issue, that in order for be, not only for, for, for continue, affordability is also very key. Many come up from Ministry of Finance, so we, any tool they put on pan, we get for no say this, that's until we government able for afford. It has to be affordable, even whatever partnership the universities then go into, they're the insurance in active way, then go able for sustain, then go able for pay for them. So even for the fees as we the talk, part of the conversation, yeah, now, because we want for ensure say, we come up with a fee where the, the, the students themselves go able for afford. So you know say you get a predictable income. If you put at a level where the student they not go pay, not able for pay, they not go for afford, then it will not be affordable. So we're pushing, we are asking, we the beg on us, say, on ourself, look for other ways. There are number of ways that we, you know, universities, some of them Professor Edwin don't highlight. But we want for also emphasize partnering with the private sector. It very, very important. It's helpful, the sense our government done, they use them, the universities themselves, this is a mode you can look, you know, you look at a number of the areas then, where they operate, where they can before say, okay, how we go partner with private sector? The good thing is, governments, what we ready for, now for provide the enabling environment, laws, the policies, whatever, uh, guarantees governments go able make on behalf of the universities, we ready for do that there. So, we ready for provide the enabling environment, um, facilitate dialogue with private sector, facilitate dialogue with other non-traditional donors, the government's ready for do that. So I think these are some of the things that we, um, then can tap into, in terms of funding higher education in an affordable way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Elara Mardin, Deputy Director, uh, the Ministry of Finance. Uh, I want come to Dr. Bremer Getber. I hope I get the name right. Uh, university lectures then, obviously very important in this conversation, also. Uh, if you talk about sustainable financing, uh, I guess something for do to now, right? In terms of, but then, it's also about service delivery, also, how for continue for, uh, for keep them are excited, in a sense, in terms of the job they want to do. You now the president of the Union of Academic Staff Association. What in our own view, right? How you see and what in our you take, what in our perspective?
Um, thank you very much for the frank talk. And we there today for establish the fact. I want thank His Excellency the President for appoint Minister and Deputy, and also the Ministry of Technical, now higher education, for the good job both that they do. Because they don't do two unique things then. One, we met at, uh, Pohu, stakeholders, together with the Ministry of Finance. We highlight a lot of issues, and we package them, and we the see the results. Because we see on our so, uh, severance benefits for lecturers, they on, as we see on our so, they wonder whether be promoted then, then they on the rise key. So I believe say again, with discussion here today, it can go yield another fruit. But sir, with all due respect, give me chance, because I get all the fact.
Um, so, so, you can do that in bullet points for me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, okay.
Um, the discussion, are they put in three categories. Of course, when you talk about sustainability, now the ability for let university for continue for run, and for let continue for run, now money, because any organization, they bloodstream, now money, nobody not go talk that to an elephant. And let we take one category, when at the administration. For let the VC or DVC of any institution run a university, it need money. And we say it depend for get money, I tell you for sure, the main source is from school fees. Yeah? So, it's like the VC, they need money for let they run. But the question will go continue for ask, that they get this money, that they get them all, and they tell you so, no. Lack and why, all those things they happen. Let we take, for example, the students then. Good number of students, they refuse deliberately for pay school fees, either for political reasons, either for any other reasons best going to them. So most often, because they refuse for pay, and they no say, if they do one or two things, government get that moral responsibility for stepping, so that they refuse. Let's say, for example, there was a time, Jala University decide for say, okay, are the insurance let the student they pay? At a critical moment, for sit exam, the administration become money very important, decide say, no, I'm not going to allow them. But what happened? Those student went directly to the political arena and speak to government. So obviously, their student, they get for enter and sit without paying. Then a one more factor, right? And what in government can do, it government can do be a lot of SAGs, granting aid. And that grant is, you get for give back money in the, to the, uh, VCs, for that the insurance say they get money for run the university. So let's say, for example, you get two hundred student there, there you go give, uh, this is just a case study. They take out of that student, uh, two hundred, you give seventy SAG, right? The administration, they especially, that SAG we don't give in the form of grants, you for give back the money to them, so that they go able run the institutions. I want tell you authoritative, listen, those monies never come in time. So the VC not get for get money for run, uh, the, 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 the system, which is unfair. So I'm taking the, the, that money in car, I keep accumulate over four, five, six years, as I'm speaking. Jala alone, they own the, over how many billion they have not paid those monies? So I expect the institution for run smoothly. The other aspect very serious is that, the system that are the, on the side of the administration, you understand? Sometimes the student that can connect with the registry of the institution, for let them fraud the system. Let me not forget this, let's be mindful. They can even upgrade through the bank, for ensure so they fraud the system, so that the money where you missing, the VCs forgets for run the institution, they not can do at all. So we get for look into that, how best we go close those gaps, so that the VCs, they go get money for run the institution. Now, let's look into the other situation, like subvention. Subventions are not forthcoming. And one thing is, don't make that say, okay, uh, uh, the free quality where you ever talk about, which is also important. I don't want to overrule the essence of the free quality. It don't bring a lot of people that are the thoughts of universities, yeah? And so good number of student that they come in. Sometimes, the leadership of the university can face which are like, no, I'm not going for take this, I'm not going for take this. But the student that they add there, they take there, they come in. Now, these same fees, the administration they use for build structure. Now, these same fee, the administration, they use for do other development, things that are the campus. If these things are not forthcoming, how will you expect the university to run? When you say this same fee by night, they take for pay the balance allowances, where for satisfy me as a lecturer? It may not satisfy me, I know, okay, obviously, that will be another challenge. Listen to me. Uh, uh, we have what we call SAG grants, which government they delay accumulated, universities are facing. We also go waiting at subvention. My sister and I, they talk about that. This thing should be a right to the VCs. They should come immediately when university can in session. You know, the accumulator, what university, uh, open, the VC get a lot of challenges, waiting for do a fix up. And we also get for talk to VCs then, when the money they can, let them get there appropriately for manage them, so that they impact go there on the university. Because as far as the politician is concerned, he care about number. Let's say two hundred are going to pay five thousand, what he goes, he don't have office, they calculating, five times two hundred, now he especially, that VC they get, but in reality, not doing the VC they get. So with VCs, they are tied up in managing the institution, we don't go allow for let it go on smoothly. We expect also politicians, let there be quality in the person. Listen, forget the degree to paper. Everybody get for area say, you get for pay for it. So if you don't say, they don't give you offer, now thirteen thousand, they, before government they plan for give you that thirteen thousand, tell the parent, they say, let they pay the thirteen thousand. So if government pay, they go refund the money, but they refuse to pay that money. And we encourage the student, they say, let there be immense, you know, think, now me entity, they knows here, I not compromise in that year. But I get a lot of things for tell you.
Thank you.
Authoritative as they pursue, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So, I mean, I will say, uh, all of which you say, probably you say differently. Yeah, but, uh, I, I almost certain say, uh, the, the universities they are aware as to them challenges there are. Uh, it's also fair for say, there are challenges that don't happen for some time, so he, he, he actually precede Minister, right? He come as Minister, I think say, he also fair for say, he precede me on call, Dr. Oui. Right, so these are existing problems. But then, uh, that, now the reason to me could get in conversation there, right? How do we sanitize the system? Hmm? And as much as you to talk about, you want for also include innovative ways, right? For, for get revenue and go bigger and better, uh, where you come about numbers then now, where you get requirement for go investing. So I think say, I mean, very important. Now, uh, Mr. Bonaffa, you now, you represent students then. I should say you get, uh, the permission of, I know say you get, uh, the, the permission of students then for dinner also, and for be part of this conversation. Uh, what in our own challenges? I mean, some of the data and statistics, I don't see two on the table, where they talk about a number of students who actually they pay their fees. I think about thirty or thirty-three percent, not more, over one, over one academic year. And then, you know, all of that, in the way, they point towards, uh, some of the conspiracy theories there, all of them in the day. How do you maybe own up? But then from also a practical standpoint, uh, see this whole conversation, right? And hide the touch and concern on that more broadly?
Uh, first of all, I feel like this is not a teamwork against the student in this country, yeah? Um, but, uh, before I come to your question, I want for say, a big thank you to the Minister of High and Technical Education, Dr. Hajar Amatulai Rui, and then the Deputy Minister, Mr. Sajowaxis Kamara in the Parma Lesekki, because of, um, the great work they do at the Ministry. Previously, when all they get this kind platform as student leaders, then at this country forgets, a kind of a platform like this, we get for do is giving business now this country. But since, oh, since they take over the leadership of the Ministry, everything we get for involve around students, and they always go bring we on board, for see say we share the table and bring we own perspectives them as students. These, they tell, we also the Ministry they operates on an open door policy, and we are very much grateful for the opportunity, Madam Minister and Deputy. Now, when we talk about sustainability, now we, education or institution, it basically they tell we in the first place say, the institutions, they know they do well, when it comes to financing their own issues. So therefore, now we all responsibility for come together and think of ways then, how we for ensure say, we continue for finance with institutions. We as an institution, in fact, that we can run to them for finance. So like nobody may expect it, I go for can't say, okay, let's go bring this at the head of every academic year, far from that. But, um, what in I they say always, I don't take side with students then. We don't advocate for things that we may be supposed to advocate for, because of fees, now the people that that who supposed to represent, whether a good or a bad, now we don't go stress one day. But when it comes to pay the fees, I always ought to a student there. For me, we come on the with kids, now boo. I think I be getting interview, cut across all the radio stations and television stations then. They test to them, they say, we don't go take a decision, therefore, we also get a responsibility for abide, by them decisions that they will, we all don't go make. Therefore, student have a pay. But I think, one of the major challenges to who they get, in terms of pay fees, now the fact say, now the first thing this will get, a high increment in terms of fees. We don't ever do experience that kind in there. We get students, maybe they pay their four thousand, five thousand, or now they are paid seven thousand, eight thousand, some they pay even thirteen thousand. And when we go for the with kids, we had an agreement, say, for continuing students, it's going to be twenty-five percent. And for the incoming students, it's going to be thirty percent. But, um, the Ministry, and all university authorities can equally agree to, say, they go beyond what we agree on, but still we they encourage student to for pay. And we also effort take into consciousness the economic situation of the country. We all understand say education very important. In fact, one of the key things we are always on this case, so when it come for pay fees, I always to a student, they say, as far as salary concerned, we the pay the lowest, now the subdivision, when it comes to fees. When you go to places like Ghana, Nigeria, they paying dollars, already they're in a thousand, thousand, thousand. But now we the pay yours. So, I always they say, we not even advance to pay fees, but are we getting the quality we will be for? Now, we say thirty, thirty-five percent, now they pay every year, but when they get equality, we pay. Now, equally, I want to tell the Minister and all stakeholder persons, say, student that they pay for a lot of facilities, they want to get for benefit for. What is the essence of extra charges? Student that they pay, student that they pay for ICT fee. I have been at Fobbe College for eight bloody years, two degrees. Not a single day I don't get access to free internet, not a single day I don't get access to computer. We pay for professional fees, we pay for food skip and other facilities. But we not get for enjoyed facilities, and even spot, all the I pamme institutions, they do spot last year. Meaning, we get administrators then, we don't siphon monies that we said they will pay last year to their safe. So now, the problems are always a common place.
Now, I just asked the question, you say you got administrators that we don't siphon. You get any, no, 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 huh? You low, low, low be?
Student get no fees, we thirty percent.
I'll come, I'll come.
No, I'll come to the question.
Yeah, I, I just want, lowy, low guide the conversation well, yeah? If we accuse or they say, now I'm listening smaller. If we the make direct accusation and say people and siphon money, it has to be proven beyond all reasonable doubt. Then they bother on law now, yeah? So you can, you can probably express your frustration and rephrase that statement today, because it get huge implications. If any court will obey any side, where they suggest with you to talk, then you get the freedom and the liberty for them. If not, you rephrase them, you can express your frustration without necessarily saying people and siphon money.
You say let me get a frank conversation.
Don't say siphon.
No, you say let me get a frank.
You get for the evidential, that's law.
I want to say something, you don't say let me say a frank conversation. And this not about the issues, this about the solutions. But you know, as much as we get a responsibility for bring the solutions, I think say, when we bring it all say, that will make the conversation very much beauty for a sustainable as well. So, now, we get student then, just like we were not mentioned, say, we get, we get student, they where they pay the thirty or thirty-five percent of fees. So inclusion, the fees include for pay for extra charges, so many thirty-five or thirty percent of student, they equally don't pay for extra charges. So in between the extra charges, you supposed to get ID cards. How many student they get now in universities, where they submit ID cards to? Even the national ID card. Even the, even the national ID cards, even the national ID cards, you know, they pay, pass, only they have fifty years. But the university authorities are asking for more than four hundred years. So are we, are we in any way say, university ID cards are more important pass the, the national ID card? So, so I think, I think, um, whilst we talk about the, the challenges, I think it very important that we equally bring forward the, the solutions. We are facing, now the more reason why we get a conversation of this type.
Alright.
So, one of the first things I feel say we need for do, for ensure say there is public and private partnerships, between governments, public institutions, and private institutions as well. Well, um, it can be very frustrating where we get, uh, institutions, es- especially banks, where they do extremely well, you get student leaders, then where they even write proposals, they submit to the people that they, they cannot consider them. they submit to the people that they, they cannot consider them, or they, they, they support, they push their five hundred thousand use, three hundred thousand use into, into disco dance, we not make basically any sense. So I, I face if they do that, it's a student, you know, government there, they equally extend the same to administrators there. So they equally need for no say they have a responsibility, whether they social corporate responsibility, for equally give back to society. So I face that, one of the key things they really need for exercise on.
Alright, okay, thank you very much, thank you. Na law clap for him, na law clap for him. I mean, I can, I can safely say, we talk like Bonaffa. I mean, for all the Bonaffas, they are sabi, I don't sabi this one now, and I know the connection, you talk like one pandem. Right, and I think say again, it's very, very, uh, sensible, right? And, and interesting points, the more I think say, don't hurt for feed into this conversation. Let I just say one thing, Madam Minister, when you talk about the extra charges then there, uh, well, I don't know if I am put, uh, Sajjo, uh, the senior for me in our college, but it tell me they come in, they left, this way Fobey College. And we self, I don't think so experiences then, far removed though, hmm? When it come to the extra charges then, they didn't tell any. That was the reason why I said, some of the existing problems there, Antonio Muideya, looka, he was, I'm the very contemporary. You know, that was the reason why I said, some of the problem then with this, where they exist now, hmm? It predate you, yeah? It predate me on call, Dr. Alpha Oui. And you don't there, so, I think it necessary for get this kind of a conversation, right? How do we move in forward? Because I think say, a crucial part of this, uh, which I would like say, and how we envision the medium to long term for look like suppose for me, how for sanitize? And as much as we do talk about, uh, waiting na the alternatives and how for be innovative and creative, as we, uh, Professor Bamanja don't say, in terms of ways for, I mean, source funding, enable for expand and go bigger and better. Uh, very quickly, I want come to one, one minute video, uh, with there on students then, uh, so Kimwacham, uh, with there on students then reaction. No, do one quick.
Thomas Tamba Sandy. I don't have the division of extra media studies, I de read adult education, and currently he are two students. I pay fees, nearly six million. All waiting them outline when the fees, what forget, the packages that I forget, I not get time from certificate, for instance, I opt in now, I not get student ID card. And I de pay.
My name is Amunata Idrasi Say, I'm in Korea, public sector management. Like where you can pay with fees, then please say before exams, you can pay with fees, and when you not pay with fees, you want a seat. But when you pay with fees, I, in the way to you count for ya, you there before achieve a lot, because some people in the way not compare anything, they can left out na door when they sit exam, but you know pay, you feel that peace, right? Because you won't pay, and you have to go for study, and it is stress.
My name is Sami Ayungai, from banking and finance, study as student. There are some, like the lectures, the lecturer has been friendly, and the lecturer on time, then come on time, and it makes also they spend in two hour for spend, makes also them be assignment for them for be, and also, then they encourage you for study more for exam, they encourage you to for spy, because they catch the spy, definitely, and therefore was to get you.
Of course, I pamme it, I de finally, and I de write me dissertation, me now be says admin students.
Na law pay attention, please.
So I pay more. We all know the country there right now, nobody know go ask him more fees, or like, we could just leave the university, and through the heads of the university, they maybe come consider it, because getting money now is very difficult.
Well, my name is Kumbasi Afar, I'm a student of Fobey College, a religion and diploma. Well, I'm not satisfied, one, we not get quality of buses, when class they go, we de stand for buses, unless we take taxi, we take bike, some students they get accidents through our bike, we de stand for bus, and lecturers then ash na exam hall. But you can't study, but then go for go, if you know to me, then they shout, make this, that, they go for be polite na the class exam. Students and they way, some everybody in brain different, you get smart student, you get weak student. Like for me, when exam they on, I de, if we, where I not sit in a exam, I not want boku to, because if I boku to, if I talk boku, everything they come out. So like I de study, tell you the exam. So like where they come inside the exam hall, they go for be know, they the mortgage to me, because we de recall, and here now university, we get my fees, the wrong one. If you repeat, it become painful, if you not pass the pay for me, then I can't repeat a problem for me.
Thank you, thank you, so, we don't get some feedback from, uh, na law pay attention small, please, we don't get some feedback from students then, I mean, I will come back to the panelists, and I should say, uh, the minister, I see I'm, we take boku, noted and done, definitely one forget about it, and it will get you, you fair share. I don't know if anybody get any, any reaction to some of the things in there, Professor Agali? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, congratulations Bonaffa for informed talk, but we also want let you understand a few things, the dynamics of the university. The thing where you say, you say sustainable financing, well, waiting Bonaffa talk, the issue is the way he is, and the issue is the way he is na the video, clearly should say finance not sustainable in the universities. Because what in the happening, na kota put ya, and they take place. Nobody know they tiff the money per se, but because they not get sufficient money for run the programs, for run the university, so, so the money we don't come inside, then get for use them, the equipment and the local are misappropriation. But people like him are start misappropriation, somebody not to say tifo, a me say, they say this tifo, use of for buy water, but you go use of for buy flask. So to you tell they happening, not to tiff, na misappropriation, because the finance not sustainable. Now, let I, let I give one or two things then. You know, financing the university, na from fees, na from subventions and other ways and sources. Fees, we not hear all the things then, within the talk. For sure say the fees not sustainable, or not contribute to sustainable financing sufficiently. We get two sets of universities, public and private. Private, virtually solely, na the fees them rely on. The public, then get fees, then they get subventions, and then get gifts, people they can get in gifts as well. Now, the other charges then, not to now it start, from time memorial, even the tell who save day, we not happen na jala, because we happen na jala, I return the money, give them back. But we not say the other colleges them, then they collect fees, they not provide the services. It's been going on for very long. But again, are because the finances are not sufficient for provide the services for which university claims say you want for, and even at that, even when they kota put ya, the services are not adequately provided. You get shortfalls. And we for agree, thank God, Mr. Bonaffa himself talks see, na we get the lowest fees na the region. I think it's time for frank discussions on payment of fees. We get for look at with fee structure and see, we not say things stronger, nobody need doubt that. But things stronger, we get people who they pay school fee, two, three times, wait and they ready for pay for them picking na university, na private school. It happened, look church I'm just start, they charge five thousand five hundred dollars. I know somebody were pulling begin, that one school, care and goodie, he ready for pay five thousand five hundred dollars, but if he care university receive one thousand dollar, that trouble. So let we look at that, this conversation must be, must be, um, frank, we get for look at what in the fees they do. The other charges, I don't talk about them. You know, we get, um, subvention, the possible finance, say, the subvention they go up, I disagree with them. In absolute terms, yes, but in real terms, no. You agree, you not agree? In absolute terms, yes, but in real terms, no. Because when they give you five thousand today, don't more than give you maybe seven thousand, convert them to dollars, we not they manufacture anything, and I bring with the bring all thing come. And every day, the lecturer has a thing now back, they want more salaries, they want facilities for teaching, for research, for this, for that. In fact, we, none of university know they provide adequately for research, and if research not there, I don't know the quality of teaching will be. So, tha- that issue of fees, let we discuss them a little bit, and let we all agree that there's a need for let we increase them small, for let the universities then go able for meet the challenges and the roles. The next thing, um, the universities then, again, the vice chancellors then, then get a role, go look at the act, one of their role, na for fan funds for the university. Um, I know they charging them a lot in the team, but I will go for ask them, let them tell me most funds they de gain for the last three years at the various universities, when they bring outside of fees, or outside of government subvention, minimal. The issue, say then they go take loan na banks, huh? This is why I hear the CVC talk, you should not say no, give them catch blank, they can take any amount of loan, now without you not go get permission. Without permission, or not any amount, because I think we should have a restriction. If we allow them for take loans, they go take loans and collapse the universities. It has to be affordable. In fact, we not do one study, who suggest say, when they project them fees for the year, any loan who then they take for the year, not for past ten percent. Ten percent, not more than ten percent, because there are other areas where them money are get for go. Then, uh, we not say, some of them don't create enterprises. We don't know how well these enterprises are doing, or what they are doing, we have to look into that. I don't know of any of we universities where really, I not say they don't mute them several times, even when me say me, they will mute them, we create an endowment, we get endowment funds, and where they can go back to successful alumni, for let them help for build, let them pay back. I don't know whether I'll get any of we universities where they do that, or where they go after alumni, for let them give them gifts. I mean, if na the university make you, if na they you train, when you become successful, you get a responsibility for can't look back and give them something. Most of we universities then, the thing they do, uh, we not get enough money, government not go money, that's a particular the public, they will make new programs then. Why you want make new programs then, where you not get the sufficient staff for, in the right quality and quantity for many of programs then they? These are problems. I mean, one, they can't afford for pay, none of we university not getting professor. You know why? One of the reasons, the professor, the one they already, they know they work, for make them, make them professor, and if they make them professor, the university then go collapse, because they not go for pay. They not go pay. So, then they create new programs then, then programs then they, they had issues with quality. Again, because the financing not sustainable. You got this financing sustainable, when they create new programs, they go make the provisions when necessary, for let them program, and their quality assure, but they not quality assure. And we are seeing that right across the spectrum. Bonaffa if fato, I still never get what in the people, you correct, I mean, not they lie, that too, you correct. But, but una say, not they pay adequately for loan that get, waiting really, we not forget, that's, that's a problem.
Thank you, thank you.
The minister, just one minister, one minute.
In thirty seconds.
The minister, talk about this third form, I will likely tell you a bit more about this third form. I hope not to that one percent form, within the talk, because that one percent form, they put at the here, is mostly for basic education, na that at the here you.
No, 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 so minister they pan shake here, they say no, boy, they come, obviously get the opportunity to talk on a number of issues then, as they don't come. Alright, so, no, which I do do, I mean, low come, I can always give back, but then, I also want for do something, because as I been say, right, na three portions of this conversation we get. The first one, I've been sustainable university financing, tied to financing also, they talk about impact of financing on students and communities. So Madam Minister, I think say, uh, in moving the conversation forward for me, hmm? Law save capable tie the second part. Hmm? Now, we can always, so na dandou, so that we capable forget a bit more space and room, hmm? We will tie the second part of the conversation now into the first, yeah, so that, uh, at least somebody capable for via off, piggyback and come back, you know, and come, continue the conversation. So I will give the minister, say, say what you want for say, Madam Minister.
Thank you very much. I glad you with the how the conversation they go so far, because na dandou will be intend for get frank conversation about the realities of what in they happen within we universities. Because only then, we will come up with solutions, and we will all go know, which we all go give we ideas them, on how for address them problems they are so, where we already established say, their historical problems, and on the day for a very, very long time. But we are hopeful that, well, if we create more and more of these platforms, we will able come up with the solutions we need. And not for change overnight, but if we deliberate, it go make the changes we need. We don't hear he say last year, we been get retreat, na boo, we call the university stakeholders then, we go discuss the issue of financing within university. And the fact say it's another agenda item today, it is show say na continued dialogue, we not solve it. But one thing we are grip and I retreats now for say, the universities then, for begin look at other ways for generate income. Now, I make as a ministry, we take a paper to cabinet, on how for develop a technical and higher education fund, where as I say earlier, go complement what in the government already they invest, they go complete, further complement the one percent education tax, where Professor Agali, under my watch, it will not all go to the sick. Um, and as wanting even for that one percent education tax, let you just know how proactive within the Ministry of Technical and Higher Education, we don't even find out, um, what in that amount today in real monetary values, forget an idea, of what in at the total one percent, and then we go know now, which we go negotiate for we own sector. But not to that, we not go for be the money, we go for the inside of Technical and Higher Education Fund. We get for look at other ways in which we can add money to that fundy. And that fund, we go for define what he defo. And we go for provide access to education, we go for complement the loan scheme, we know about the loan scheme, where His Excellency launch. We go for see how we can support universities in terms of creating their learning environment, equipment, infrastructure for, 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 for the university students in. So we get your role for play, and as I don't say repeatedly, all man get to role for play. The universities then also get role for play. We de encourage them for let they identify business ventures, let them see what in na the team, where they spend mokuma rupa, and see how they can turn down the to business. So that if na, for example, printing, where there is, sometimes they can get for go print outside of the country. Why make one not go set printing press now, let the money stay within the country? Then I just one example, so many team then they, where they can go and back upon, and where they provide the support and guidance for need and do that, but in most cases, they already understand that. We also get for ensure say, we work for strengthening systems within the university, and na they it cut across, from financial management to administrative, systems that they go give we data, that they go help with transparency, accountability, efficiency, all that thing they go help with. So we ensure say the money where we de generate, when we, and set up, when, when we don't begin. when we, and set up, when, when we don't begin see money, they can start with Technical Higher Education Fund. When the universities then don't they now at the forefront and they champion for generate more money internally, we get for ensure say, the money then and they use them for, in an efficient manner. And we can use systems for do that. The systems can also help for address some of the problems that we don't discuss already. We know, myself be there within university, myself now be a student, I know say sometimes, as student, you get try for beat the system. But if we strengthen the system, then we go reduce that is small. So we know all of them challenges they are so, we all there within the sector, we are familiar, so I'm glad we would be very frank and honest about these conversations. So if we set up those systems there so, we go able address some of them problem there so. And I mentioned earlier, so we already do work with two organizations then, for set up an education, um, um, further enhance the existing education management system where they within the university. And also come up, develop a quality management system, because we can do, we can generate all the money we want for the university, but if it not translates to quality education, what we achieve? We not achieve anything, so we need for get quality management system. We even think for introduce ranking at country level for universities then. Not to for point finger say you they do bad, you you know they do what thing, no. As I always, they say now for late, we encourage partnership. The resources that we get in the country, we maximize upon them. If university A, they do well, by this parameter, and university B, they do well, let them talk to them safe, and see how they can support them safe. Let university B come up to the way we want them. Because when one university fail, God forbid, now we all don't fail. So we all get for work together. And the issue about other charges, now thing we don't discuss for over a year now. It come up now, the retreats now, for say university students, they not go they pay for services then, they not get them. We make them very clear, and the position of the ministry still stands. They not go they pay for service, they need to get them. I mentioned earlier say, we don't do work with organization for bring sustainable internet connectivity to universities, because one challenge with the university students, we don't talk, they they pay for ICT fee or, or internet fee, they they get different names across institutions then, they need to get access to them. So we say, okay, let we see how we can support as the ministry. And we go work with the universities then, for where that money, where the university, where the students and they pay for ICT, for example, and they ring fans them. And then show say a percentage go for pay for the service. And then the balance, where they left, where they retain, now for maintenance. Because whatever infrastructure we go for bring, for, for internet connectivity and money, we go for pay for the equipment then. And we go for ensure say, we ready for maintain them as and when we need them. Not to where they broke down, they begin fair money. So what the students say, pay their money for ICT, this universities then go ring fans them, and I agree say, a percentage of this go go towards for pay for the service. So the students and they get the service where they pay for. They will retain small money, where in case any equipment need maintenance, we ready then, then for do them. So there's no interruption in the service. Then I just one example, okay, use that model there, across the other services, the way the university then they, and the students and they pay for. But this one for encourage students and say, not to team where they for change overnight. Not to team for build systems, if even they change overnight, we don't solve this problem. But it need to change overnight, where they tackle them head on, but they do them strategically, one after the other. Well, don't do one, the lessons we'll learn from that day, we the best practice we apply unto the next one, until we solve the problem, but we want for the here for Muna as well, and when I say get to role for play in all of this, all man get role for play this. I'll stop here.
Thank you very much, Madam Minister, so, uh...
Yes, sir.
I, 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 I come, I come.
No, you get for allowing for...
Yeah, allow, allow me la, la.
Now you the moderator, allow us, please.
I mean, I just pass stand there, so I do, wait a call, I'll come back to now, wait. I mean, there's a reason, we team make a no, I'm bringing you kind, I just say, Dr. Tyler, I say guess until you want to. I know the professor, he say, I mean, things he want to, but also want to guide the conversation and move on forward, in as much as I'll go for piggyback on some of the issues, issues, issues there where the doors is. So, I mean, I don't know, at this point, I've asked the audience for, for free, I want let this team be interactive, because so far, it's like say no more, now one way, hmm? And at where I want let this stay ago, so, do you, if anybody get anything for say, based on them conversations that I've been here so far, uh, for free for car pen, and say what you want for say. Golo Kata, and then I'll, I'll talk to the gentleman after, yes. Zach, you help me with mic, yeah? No, I don't say you get voice, Golo, but use the mic.
So I've been, so the first thing I want to tell, uh, the organizers, when I thank you. But I believe say the private sector for sit down at this table. Then are the first issue. Because in this conversation, uh, public-private partnership, now a critical cornerstone. So that before they are at this table, it will be give sense how we relate to them. The reason why I say this, that because two years ago, the American government send me go US for go learn from what they call workforce development and skin scan. One of the thing that we will find out in the cause of the training, now that governments for provide equipment, now the universities, would be private sector. Strong conversation, mining companies, construction companies, hotel and tourism, etc. And donors, donor partners, by the way, then develop that synergy there. It will able help for solve some of these issues. We have been there now, the National Education Commission, one of the year, one of the fund, who project them, be fond July University College in aquaculture program. A fond for, uh, meeting my guy, in hotel and tourism. A fond GTI, uh, and construction processes. Until we build a very strong synergy there, we are never going to get it right. Then are the first thing.
Thank you, we get another thirty seconds.
Yeah, the second, the final part of it, what I've just want for say now that, we then they also, where before talk about, uh, curriculum development, job placement and, and career process, where the universities not able get properly where it. But finally, the university said say we not don't develop innovative funding mechanism yet. I can imagine where Uni- Unimac say, they get poultry, where they produce twelve thousand eggs. Where the universities really will sit down around agriculture, what are they doing? So these are critical issues, what we really need for make them understand, and go back, and really decide say, we go for fundraise, and make soberness around that. I think say that they go help. Finally, finally, and you say we want for the loan scheme, a loan, do you have a big? Now I know ever post called, um, granting aid. And it's not get small percentage of granting aid for, 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 for very little students. If they all sign Ghana, Gambia, Nigeria, South Africa, that they run, or two, the two scheme there. I think say that they go help the country, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, uh-huh, you see, below we don't, we don't raise the template more, I see students them at the back, so... Uh, yes, okay, alright, sir, yes, sir.
Thank you very much, thank you panelists, um...
Short and brief, sir, one minute, please.
For later we day, for later we day, on the path of education, it goes through perseverance, patience, dedication, and hard work. Very few people can choose to go that path in terms of national development. And not that universities not get land, or universities are not producing. We produce on what we think we can do. Jala University was completely tear down, where the rubber were done. Professor Agali helped for bring that up a little bit. We not still look at that. They will say, let the university return, forcefully. When we return, some of the areas where Jala before done, look into, for continue for put the past glories of that university. We are not part of any reparation prize. And you they take small, small, for let you be. Yes, we are talking about air production, Jala is known for it, and Jala did one. But we did one on a very small scale, but we are known for it. We the kill cow, but we not kill for the whole of Surielium. We the kill for the vicinity who's have webo give the protein needs. We the make small, small farm, we not go do one for that will feed the entire Surielium for now. But the key examples are there. People then they where they produce new varieties. But what in we want for let we see...
I'll give you another, I'll give you another thirty seconds.
What in one for let we see we able do. We they talk about students, we they talk about university administration, or university staff. If staff they not there, students they not go afford for they not university. If student, uh, otherwise, not there, university not there exist. I think we need a very firm partnership between these two parties at the university development. One key example is that we get what we call in Jala, Jala University volunteers. They are here, they can speak of it, within the university academic and administrative staff. They encourage them with the plans where they can with. Student union for keep good example of what then they do. Maybe public-private partnership, we get a way where we want for go. But in many cases, we cannot go that far, because we not create the, the level ground yet. So I believe, let us discuss firmly about this kind of situations and know that we capable for do them.
Thank you.
Lastly, income generation, we don't take up. For now, make sure say, we produce, we guns, and other facilities, including other regalia, on profit, profit-making basis. We are trying it, but it is on a small level. What we call financing, it depends on some other areas, where we need for discuss appropriately.
Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, go, I see there's a female hand at the back. And again later.
Um, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Phantasthefni, and I'm a student at Multimaria Technical University. My talk is back here. I be there here one, where I pay with fees, um, five million, ten, ten millions. So all of us saw me, I get a grant money, because I was a female and I'm a medical student at Multimaria Technical University. So I was fortunate to have that, um, grant money. Then, um, at the point, I don't pay with fees already, where I don't pay the list of granted students there. Yeah, so after me meticulous, me, that this one me for go collect the money back where I don't pay already. But, so for now, that the university tell me say, government not send me money yet. Up to now, I'm already my final year, government not send me money yet. Then, also, other students are complaining, because this same money we have paid, other student they back there, they get them outside for hundred millions. I get one of me colleague by the name I set a call on, it be accept now the same, in a victim of the same, eh, circumstances.
You get, you get fifteen seconds more.
Okay, sir, thank you. So, they be there from outside because of hundred millions, where already in five million going at the finance office, where they say government not send the money yet. Then two, I they discuss, um, something with me colleagues there from other university. Natural as they give excuses say, when they come, we not get transport for can lectures. But I do endorse to me a principal, in order ever encourage that, Philip Canu. No matter who's a leader, like Yodha Makini, you for can teach. And no matter what thing we do, as long as you are employed as a lecturer at means Multimaria Technical University, it's your responsibility to deliver what you are you should do.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, uh, la, just say, we want for encourage more, if we get more students here at the back, we want for hearing from them. Students, we get any other female students? Yeah, no, come, give you that lady, there's a lady under, yeah, then set up. One minute, every contribution, not, not for last, more than one minute, one question, if there question or comment.
Good afternoon, well, this not a question, uh, contribution, concerning this sustainable financing. Some, years ago, somebody tell me say, during the days now, this country yeah, anything where you the study, they they make sure say the university, eh, create a way where you able for put that study there, within the university, eh, in years, you they able for monetize them, how? For instance, now me they study IT, at the Jala University. Where was the go alarm say, a particular students develop a software, so that we go before check, we create them online. But up to now, university now approve on for let, we will use them. If the university be approve them, and give access to student, they follow you use them. You they able for pay for use them, then that money there, out of that money there, the university they benefit a percentage for the user they use them, for check you create them. Even agricultural students then, when they go do agricultural studies, when you do, when you don't contribute them. They produce, you they market them, they get time where you they market the things that way you the study. So that you they able for, you the university they get percentage from that marketing there. All that they say now, money to the university.
Noted, noted, thank you very much. I very quickly, la, just say, uh, the lady from meeting my guy, do you, I just say this, that talk we talk, the one that hold in administration, they don't hear here. Also, from that time to now, from today, yanda, say now, they say government not send the money yet, do you on that time? Hmm? But I would advise you, do resolve directly with the administration, right? Let they be for sort that they out, who's I should they for talk. Yes, uh... Uh, I want to go by that. That gentleman, who were coach like me. I become coach super million, I make a recall out.
Thank you very much, good afternoon, everybody.
Yes, sir. Um, we welcome this particular town hall meetings, because everything we get for do with education, particularly this tertiary education, now we the students then. And for Fura Bay College here, I was I made it as agenda student. I believe say, now two areas, the more now, we as students then, particularly in Fura Bay College here, one, are the exams office. If today we they see so many dropouts them, now this country, now as a result of the exams office. You they get illegal way for go now exams, so for, as just for grading, missing this that they happen. Exams office now, one of the biggest problem where we want actually, for let we policymakers eh, able look into these areas. When you they go now exams office, for any problem we get, let the exams office as a able attempt to be amicably without any confusion, please we they beg on this. Also, the student section.
Thank you, thank you. Now just take one, we take one more, and then we will come back now to the panel. Yes, uh, me gender bias, so, now not blame me.
Hello, yes, standing on existing protocols. Me just want for appeal, appeal to the Ministry of Higher and Technical Education, and the government also, for allow the universities for really implement the robustness in collecting fees from students. In other words, when students are asked to pay fees before they write their exams, please make the appeal as a lecturer from Jala University, for may they allow the student then for pay. Because the last exams, when they stop students from paying their fees, you know, that interrupts the whole process of collecting these fees. Because we talk about business, we need capital, and we can generate it from the fees who we they collect. Some students, they really get the money then for pay, but from where government intervene, say, no, we not allow them for seats, now they drop back, they go eat the money then, and they never paid. So that is my appeal, thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, so, uh, we will put a hold on then, then, uh, comments and then questions from, from Muna. Uh, and, you know, we can't continue the conversation, but then naturally, we will move on now with the second part, because it gets something for good financing, where, uh, now been part of the conversation initially now, so now get an opportunity, as I've been say, for piggyback now into other issues, the one I want for talk about. And I can also feel free for comment on, uh, uh, within another from the audience, and then, uh, I spend some time on the, the next segment. So the next segment, uh, we, first of all, don't talk about sustainable university financing. Uh, now we do talk about, we want for talk about the impact. The impact of financing on students and communities. Now, uh, I think... No, 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 I come, I know which I do, because my financing, now it's for me. The impact of financing on students and communities, naturally for me, I just think say, one, they lead to the other. Hmm? And that's my idea, now I make I skip the second one, deliberate. Sustainable financing, university financing naturally, is a, get a consequence. Hmm? And one of the consequence will be impact on students and communities. And that's the reason we team make a lot tied into the, to the need together. When I don't talk about the first part, when I... When I don't talk about the first part, I get some things that I want for say. So I will start with, uh, Dr. Gebbe, you be a bit anxious, you be want for talk something.
Thank you very much.
So, I mean, comment on this second part.
Madi, uh, Madi, I tell you boku boku thank you, yeah? And this thing we would they talk on a CEO's business. And sometimes, uh, who they talk about CEO's business, therefore allow people therefore talk the truth. And, uh, so that the solution will bubble up.
But so far, we don't allow you, right?
Yeah, yeah, well, I come to the points then first, because I don't package and for tell you, because we there are for solutions. And this package what they tell you, so not to go lecture at there. Because a lecturer there, they represent. If I come with the lecturer there, you, which we they come up with a retreat very soon, we they call the attention of everybody, we come up with a blueprint, a document, we will put onto the attention of government, so that then tear all, we will don't see. So do you are just give a small chance, la, highlight. Now, I want tell the T E C charm, boku boku thank you. Why they come up with that new COS? They come up with that because they not have boku professors, so that for no they for pay there. That a fact, they not talk at today, I not go bother you again. Um, la, come to the lecturers. To be frank with you, sir, we get, uh, lecturers in our university, where they use the university in name, forget form. They don't boku, but it is secret. The money they can, I don't want to benefit, even the motor car that they asset there, that they use private number plate. So if you lecturer there, you then at university, they use university name, forget funding. Do you are, they asset the way they left. Give university administration for help there, run the administration. Not to your property, now the university you use forget that grant there, and it's going on, sir. Yeah? So allow me this now, also we the hit, so that everything will balance.
We get, I just also want to let you know, very quickly, Dr. Gebbe.
Yes, sir.
I want to let you know, so we get time constraints.
The other issue I want to talk on this ability.
Get the next two few minutes.
All right, all right, the ability we we talk about. Sometimes really the leadership of the VCs, that is another challenge. Not be realistic, some VCs where they give their assignment form, they be a kind of demigods within they are to make. Where you they govern somebody, make sure so let him know what he they govern. And that is right, ladies and gentlemen, people that way they do well, we continue for commend them. One of the greatest person, when a very good leader in this country, we need for name her. We all know Malam O, AKA Mogo Mystic, now man Awale Oklafua. If we get one or two leaders of those people in this country trust, things will be workable. Engage those who are subordinate with you, let come up with a plan, let them buy, and so that things will happen. But most of we will not get that, so how you manage the finance? Well, you the manager with your own way, because you get absolute authority for govern people there. We get also waiting ve- very, very important one, Bonafa, talk, when that will be the last thing. Corporate responsibility of some institutions. For example, take Jala within a remote area, we get bank, the way they manage, they get money. Basic thing, recreational center, we want refurbish those to you give there, they can't. And let me tell you, Goloka Tasseled it, most of these institutions, who they compare we serve to. Not to government they form, now those institutions, they form them and things they happen. And the last one, sir, where you go give me chance that talk, let us start for compare. Hey, listen, do you know the content of Sierra Leone to Nigerians? Those Nigerians came into this country, where they land, they go develop their institution. They create an enabling environment, they create, which university they in this country, where they online journal, where lecturer they they publish. When I tell me, they increase the capacity of staff, so therefore they have the right to increase. Go Jala since who don't get TK, now the same TK may VC they govern, the same structure, the same thing. We thank God for back here for Jala University. So what we are saying, in this situation, we not go for compare. Things are hard and they are getting harder.
Thank you.
Those monies that come in, we think, let them be managed for people that they don't survive in the country, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Madi, I will come to you, but I just saw one thing very quickly. I nothing say wrong for compare. Yeah? For me, I think comparing aspirational also. Huh? He aspirational also. If we the talk about how we can move, uh, tertiary education forward, you have to be aspirational, you have to have a vision. Hmm? No, 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 you also have to, I mean fundamentally disagree, right? Because, I, I mean, I think you definitely look to bigger and brighter examples and see how you give before take you into that point there. So if you're not, if you're not a compare, then you, you lack ambition for me in a life. Right? You want for do better, you have to do better. Uh, Dr. Elara, now I'll come to Dr. Elara and then I'll come to you, Professor.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I think say firstly, for the financing for the impact, we to go for pay attention to now the management of the finances. Um, in the public sector, we get what we call public financial management. So I will relate now to the universities. If universities then get for begin charge economic fees, then get for ensure say, the minister touch on that actually. When I get for ensure say, we are putting systems and processes in place for ensure say, them money here. One, as the minister have been highlight, students then first of all, systems, but the way students are not able for balance the system, you now go able for pay, then go, um, pay and on time. Also, um, systems in place for be accountable and transparent with their money there. So now governments, we pay a lot of emphasis on monitoring, um, auditing of forms, public forms, um, account, reporting, that they also very, very important. Whatever money, every financial statement should be made public, they can't in any day. Now then governments really, really procurement rules. So of course, when we now get for collect money, the minister had highlighted a lot of things away, um, the universities do want do. You get for procure services, processes they get for there. I'm sure they already there, but they will need to be strengthened. Because anything when a taxpayer money you they use, you get for ensure say, you able for account to the people. So for that impact go there, for me now they, I think to say, the systems need, we now get for invest in systems then, for ensure say, um, we now be accountable and transparent. Then the next step, of course, the impact is enormous, boku boku, boku, boku benefit there. If you invest, if you get more finances, you able for do more, provide better quality education, where the student they now in there wants, where they pay, they want receive the services, they not, I think, around the room, now they they not talk. Wants, who they pay, but want for receive the services. Infrastructure will improve, the facilities then. We all know the building where, um, um, engineer to the coal bill. Where you go there, you they see the type of facility, you know compare with other facilities there. Some of who are fortunate for, 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 um, study outside of this country. Library services, then kind of services, then the way they access. We not able get to now, because of course the funding not there. So with more funding, then they go improve. Of course, you go also for invest in the lecturers them. That also come up, where the minister said this is now the vision for the universities, they want for invest more in the lecturers them. So the quality of the education within the person will improve. Ultimately, what you all this will lead to, of course, the student they will be better educated. It means say they will get access to better jobs, where they are go able for transform the lives of their own families now. Because if I'm better paid, it means I able for educate more picking than I mean, I mean, I mean, family. I will for access better health services, etc. And of course, then it means say the developmental benefits to the country, boku, boku, boku. The country go go before, all this who they try for achieve with development plans then. Education very, very important, so if the quality improve, then we will see the developmental benefits we go accrue to the country.
Thank you very much, thank you. Uh, Professor Ali.
And I think say wrong, for that sit down, I say something with three sound. I talk say, no university, that shall not get ten professors.
The mic, sir, I have checked the mic properly, let us see. You can use, use this other one, it's okay.
Where I start, I talk say, the finance not sustainable. Then I go ahead and say, no university not get ten professors in Sierra Leone. If they get ten, the system go almost collapse, that's what I said. I not talk say, we bring COS, for their people in all, and we deliver it to all the people and promote. Not give people a wrong impression, I think that is bad. Now, I can, sir. Two, thank you. Two, the issue of say, not for compare. The charmando address, but even now we act, even now we act, it says parity of esteem. Parity of esteem amongst institutions and their products. The act, when I would walk on, that is there, go and check it. So must compare, and Sierra Leone go to an island, if the one go be further, so low go be, and I was counting this. Honestly, so, but wait I have for talks, sir. This issue of, uh, how the education, the financing, the impact.
Impact of financing on students and communities.
I want to talk small on that.
Yes, sir.
Because the financing not adequate, we the produce poor quality students all around. If you go now all, if you do a survey amongst employers, they are all they complain because the quality of students are poor. And the reason, that because we not get the facilities, we not get adequately trained, uh, lecturers, we not get research for back with teaching. And so, really, really, the students themselves for understand that what, what they are getting, you know, in statistics, they say, Gebbe go tell now, he say garbage in, garbage out. If we not provide, we just put garbage in, that garbage you will pull out. So because you know sustainable, the current finance is not sustainable, we are not producing adequately trained and qualified students. That, I know I talk too.
Yeah, now, I mean, you, you spout on, spout on, I mean, inside to you for talk. Uh, and I think say, you, you, I, I get a sense say, that, that there is frustration. Hmm? In which you say, uh, but then also, you, you more or less they ask for an overhaul. We need for get some serious thing. Well, I think saying are the essence of within, uh, the Honorable Minister want for no begin now so today. And this conversation not go end now, uh, at the end of this exercise, but definitely we take on forward and make sure so get a relevant conversation on all the relevant quarters then, right, for before, uh, I reimagine. Hmm? Education in the medium to long term. I will come to you, uh, Professor Edwin.
Thank you very much. Um, I, I been see when they go back and forth with the, um, with the points and we for, over address and we not get much time now left. And I the hope say this conversation will continue from here. Because we not seem for even put a handle on anything yet. We just don't trigger the issues for say, problem there. And we all accept the fact say, we not do well. The truth is, when you talk about impact of financing on the students them, on the students them, not only the whole institution, but if you watch, we recognize the fact that there is a problem and we need for address them. I will mention this. We all, we there around this table, get a responsibility to each other. The students themselves get big responsibility to themselves and to the institution. When we watch today, how students and they handle education itself, it, it really appalling. Then why for institutionalize, even examination malpractice? And in which case, you yourself they contribute to your own failure. Then you not go stand at par with, then one they we, um, Professor Ali just mentioned, digital. Very often, we as university administrators them, they wish for we students them the best. Not to any both, but just coming from the University of West Indies, Jamaica, last two days, I realize that students themselves want for be better people when they graduate. You not, cannot compare that with real students now, because they not get the responsibility to themselves. All they care about is, I want for get high grade and then I'll get them at every cost. But the problem is that we have not paid the real service to reserve. Because if we finance the institutions them, each and every one of we will get responsibility to financing the institution and making sure that these institutions work. We go get, we, 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 with one say, now for put your money, we, sorry, your mouth there. We go talk with frankness and the boldness for say, yes, this person not do right, let, let me exempt them. The students them, if we get the way with all, we will provide the service for them in such a way that they say will come out and be the real people we would they expect. But right across salon, right across salon. Now the one big disappointment, that's what most of we get. You will see, right from primary school, where they actually transition, take a university, the person, they don't already teach them for make, it just a continue for cheat, take and reach, can reach me. Instead of paying that money for make this young grow, then they pay them for cheat. So let we, let we, let we, let we transfer that particular energy for imbibe, imbibe some kind bad habit to be picking them, or to a brother and sister them, and transport them into doing something good. I will, I will end up with, with, because we the talk about, which can impact you will get. During that time, in the way me in the Jala University College, I will must do something where I go home, for, thanks more money for myself, for go back now college. Not to any castigation on the students them, but our encouragement to them for said, they don't become overly lazy and dependent. Very lazy and dependent, that they not for do nothing absolutely. In my university, we will give small, small scholarship to students them and call them students ambassadors. I bring that particular idea from Jala University, Jala University with the, um, NUVs. Now me and them sit down and perform the Jala University volunteers, so that they go to shadow some jobs. How many of them, now among students now, we go have can do small, small job on campus for raise fee for themselves? They won't do that. Even the one they say we will give scholarship to, you hardly see them until the very last day, when I go to examination and then they tell, they tell and say, when I go back and bring me notes, say, yes, you, you have been, you have been cleared. How many of them go say, well, for do A, B, C and D on campus? So it is our responsibility also, as students, I mean, when I, the students them, for make, we now serve in innovative ways them, for fund we now serve. So I will go, when I go pay on a fees them rather than, uh, if, if any fees. Last point, you can imagine that students now go to the banks or they are being, sorry, then they, then they fraud them, for go to a bank, and then, then they fraud the institutions them. Money we go can reach, where, where they for pay like three million or three thousand millions, they will pay three thirty millions, and then they come with receipt of three thousand millions. And that's been investigated, that's been investigated. We not there as here for castigate anybody, we want for start this conversation. So now when we go back, so I'm saying now we are institutions them, let me say they go again back to the radio, with permission of we, we, we supervise the ministry, let me talk about the, the issues. Then we find tangible solutions. This meeting today, I will give we all the solutions we really require.
Oh, naturally. Thank you very much, uh, Professor, uh, sorry, Gabrielle, Dr. Ernest Bamandja.
Thank you, Mr. Madi. Uh, I want go back to the first issue that it flew into this. And I want say, when we look at private universities and public universities, we the serve the same people, the very same Sierra Leoneans all around the country, which are various public institutions, and then, and then we serve they, serving the common Sierra Leonean and helping educational needs. So if we, we are serving the same people, we only try for meet the president's need, why should we be set aside where you can to subvention? With private, yes, that not means say we the charge extra fees. We are not. If you look at what in governments, universities they pay, plus what in the government is subsidized for, if you put all that together and charge, nobody not go go to a private university now. And this they get worse even when it come to government increasing fees, seventy-five percent, which is a good thing. But can you imagine the amount of pressure we put on private universities? We get for thirty, if we cannot measure up, now come up small. If not, then they left, we go to the side, or then we want DPR, DPR, now he knows what I'm talking about, because we are the Or then we want DPR, DPR, he knows what I'm talking about, because we are the closest together than a machine, we know what you they suffer. So we say they are ask, we are, Madam Minister, please, and all those concern. Let we think globally, think about good of Sierra Leone. I think even the private universities need some push, we not necessarily equally. Yes, we are private. Remember like Unimac, we are nonprofit. We are nonprofit, we are doing for big money for we said. We are doing for serving the educational needs of the country, okay, I own that one day, that side day. Then the other thing we want to talk about. The issue of slow or low payment of school fees. You know, unique to private, uh, public universities alone. There has never been a time in Unimac where we say we get eighty percent of students who pay fees. No. We now go receive series of letters asking this, asking that, several things, well, again, we are Catholic institution, so people they feel say, ah, they further they get. But then we said it go the same way for friend the phones, relying mainly on the, the, the school fee. Okay, now looking at how this in fact impact on students, on the community and everything. When we get whatever we get, now from there we the use. Apart from the daily running of the academic year, now there we the pull again for doing infrastructures. If you go now, Unimac today, on West Younge and Fatima campuses, you will see several new structures don't come up. And this, now for we will accommodate the numbers and make the environment suitable for learning. As I speak, we the come up with, we postgraduate buildings, now Yoni Campus, which is massive. Okay, so this is how we put into what we they do. We also they engage now in partnership in research. We they join with other people, other universities, whether within country, outside country, for joint research projects, so we attract grants. And these grants, they, they help the university and we taught uh, 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 community outreach. It help a lot, okay? It boosts research and empower even the, we daily teaching, okay? And as we do this, we also they engage in pedagogical trainings. Because we get lecturers in universities, when we get an educational background, let me be honest with this reality. Yes, they are experts in their fields, but the educational background they not get her. So what did we decide? And thank God, TC, this, two years ago or so, two years ago, make a mandatory. For every university, for pay attention to those lecturers and empower them. So we don't start on with them and we are doing it constantly. We just done one this past week, okay? Then in terms of research, which also held last year, not early this year, with very first international conference. For as a university. We, we only get other conferences within, but this was the very first international one, we attract a number of academics from many parts of the country. And that was also very, very successful. And this we include we page the students too. One thing where we want draw how it impacts students. We want pay attention to within Doctor, sorry, Professor, I just say, me I call our students attitude to learning. And not only the students, even their parents. Now we don't count to a point as alone, we don't allow picking the repeat. Where the picking not perform well, they are managing from me leg, this is don't, it don't big now, and a girl picking, don't pull Bobby. That's, it's just an excuse. You know, they help the picking, you know, they help institution and definitely now negative returns they bring on the country. We know they grow that way they. We therefore accept say, if the picking not reach there, no push on there. Now the new phenomenon is, where the picking reach from uh class five, he goes to N P S E. Where reach SS two, he goes to, but what are we doing? The picking not even get the, the mental preparedness for go face that level they, with the push and leg go. Which is very, very, very wrong also.
Thank you.
Another thing where I want to face my colleague lecturers, we very bad way we they do. There are times, now we they make the picking and they fail. Because we mostly, they already attend class. They not get notes, they not get nothing, but all we do is pass one, three, four page pamphlets, let them buy and sign their names at the back. And they all get marks. Which is very sad. We are killing equality.
Front talk, front talk. Thank you very much. So, uh. Madam Minister, I give permission. I'm not saying you take notes, you get a few things that you want to say. Uh, but they only get the last bite, so we turn, they want transition to the final uh topic. Yep, keep, keep on, you go get an opportunity, you want, is it thirty seconds? It will pass, okay, well, hold on to ram. You can always piggyback, I mean, I can to you. I want to go to the final part now of this conversation, where they talk about. The role of universities and quality education. I mean, we don't talk plenty about finance. Hmm, how are the impact students and communities, we don't talk about sustainable university financing. Uh, I want to probably focus now small on the university, now so the role of universities and quality education. And I should say, another already say a lot. Professor Edwin don't say quite a lot, a lot where they talk about. Uh, university and quality education, the same with Reverend Dr. George Bamanja. But I will go now, one more opportunity, just in case you know I'm zoning few particulars there. But I will start with uh. Bon affaire. So Bon affaire, you go get an opportunity in two, three minutes, right, for talk about. Impact of financing on students and communities and then transition to this one also now, so I will give about two, three minutes.
Yes, pretty much so far the conversation. I mean, if you say now. A platform for basically gang up against students. But the way I would see the conversation on go now. Um, I feel everybody though, I agree say, in as much as the student they get a responsibility. But then the university authorities equally get a huge responsibility for a show see. The educational system in this country ah could become strengthening and sustainable for future purpose. So. Moving forward. I think say. A very important that we get for understand a few things surrounding this particular topic. Normally, when I talk, I always take side with the students then. Like I say, that is my own base, now for the other day. So I not go come now public and say something contrary. But again, when you get for doing frank conversation, then we get for no say we do justice, justice to the conversation for a show see. We get everything right, because we not do this for students and normal, we not do this for ourselves, but we do this for Sierra Leone. Therefore, in as much as we. Are we are say the university equally get a responsibility. With the student they equally get a responsibility. If you can check me phone, constantly are the text and call the minister, the deputy, the peers. For advocate for student there on a number of issues, but for we commonly we hit and come. Where I know say I don't really exhaust all the universities that don't communicate adequate to the student there on the importance for pay fees. Throughout this semester or academic year we pass, not a single person, not even a single S G president. Advocate to the university authorities that for me they allow student to pay. For me they enter an exam hall without they not pay fees, because we know say now them, we knew they had the university authorities, they had the use for run the institutions. Moving forward. In as much as we the pay their fees there. We equally no say. The, the, the problem is the quality. The problem is the delivery. The problem is with the results, waiting with basically they get a return. I'd say you say lecturers get paid at the same time, some lecturers only they take students in. Per semester like one or two times. But at the end, they, they expect the student they for just pass, we expect say this now university, students for immature enough for go out and fair notes. But we get lecturers equally, we not even they give a line to students then. So how you expect the students for be well guided, for, for know the areas they forbid and prepare for exams adequately. So in as much as we get with lapses, in as much as we get with challenges, but I feel say. Buck of the issues lies with the university authorities, I feel say a good number of people at the high table don't agree to that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, Dr. Bamanja there. You say you have two minutes.
Yeah, thank you very much. You go patient with me sometimes, I can emotionally charge.
Sir?
I say you go patient with me sometimes, I can emotionally charge, you not go blame me.
That's okay, you're allowed to.
All right, um, you the impact of universities, right? First thing where we don't observe, eh, there is no link between the lower level ministry and the upper. I can tell you for free, which Tonya sitting over there can confirm. In the lower level, if you look the curriculum now, there are programs meant for A I and all the rest. How many lecturers were the university not prepare at higher level so that they can study artificial intelligence? Let us be realistic. So they have reviewed it and they are not linking that review document with higher level. And if that happened, then there is a disconnection between lower and upper level, uh, and the upper. So you not go able urge the upper for prepare and the same thing happens with the number of students there where they sit was and pass. Modretto sir, we get a good number of students there, we be over there now, hard they get a result. That are another story for investigating, but we also qualify for enter our university. But university not go able take there because they not get laboratory for take there, neither infrastructure or space. So they get for restricted, they are qualified. So for, for let we get our service, let government invest in university, there is no magic. Government has to pour money in university. Like what we see we they say, go, since what we were there, go and laboratories, if they are doing chemistry practicals, physics practicals. And let me tell you, in the next few seconds along the line, physics we die. Uh, of course mathematics and physics they are on the verge. And which other subject you go now go help me. So we have all political scientists and all the rest, these are things we need for regroup again. A country where they not get people where they think and scientifically, that country is helping for too. Right? Now let me continue another point, how university will get impact. You go now those institutions or ministries, we have consultancies that are ankle. And only academic go able talk something and come up play with numerical variables and interpret them. So that this will human capital development, would the error go along the line, that there is no data for anything. If I'm like go to the Ministry of Agriculture and say, if you go to Moamba and go to one of that, this field I might this thing come out, what is there? People are doing, but there are no records because academics are not involved in those records, so those things can be published on behalf of the country. And those variables they use for calculate this we, we man, there is no magic over it. If you ignore academics, things will not work. Those consultancies anchored in those ministry, we now begin contact the V C's and talks, so we get this. Where lecturer they go able engage in, where go reach now the community, so that the impact will be created. We get people that we they give their family there secretly, where better report now be and then they, because lecture they use that they. For if we improve on the CV, but if you not give me, what you use the path where you really were like, like, like it. Let, let me be realistic. So you have to treat the academics very, very seriously. Institutions get for treat institu-, uh, universities very, very seriously for letting things change. Let not talk too much, sir.
But it's like what they talk say they enjoy me. Oh, bad, bad man. I can disagree small no more, but I enjoy the conversation, I mean, you talk plenty in the right. The other side, I would disagree with you again on this way ah, now who they ask say, let government. Let them invest heavily. You know, we talk about a necessary sort of funding, have a push.
Modretto, Modretto, where lecture they get for do this program.
He thinks he would have.
Where it treats, where they invite you like go there. Those people came into this country and be the land, uh, something.
Thank you.
They go do a, go Senegal, not go far. Go to Senegal, the, uh, uh, university research unit. It, it's not talk, it's not talk, it's money.
I'm not, I'm not.
Now money they come with money.
I'm not a point.
Uh-huh, now money they come with money, you not go do a abstract. Now they can land, we still be there, now because we forefathers refuse to invest in where. So no do a, no do a, and the man we want to talk say, you say, yeah, I want to talk on behalf of government, let me give you some.
I just want to say, I just want to say something, Dr. Ila, before you come, very quickly. I should say now this kind passion, I see, I make on our, on our electoral also, as president of academics. I, I not miss him. I not miss at all, I mean, they make, they, they advocate for now, I mean, what we tell about, I say. Uh, Dr. Mari, Ila, over to you.
Thank you very much. Um, very interesting suggestions and um ideas then done they come up. I hope say people lend it around where they note the ideas they will they come up with now today. Um, in terms of the universities they whole, of course, we don't talk over and over again, say, the services will need for be provided. Um, then the next thing I think this would be for the lecturers as well. Invest in the lectures, universities get for take that say very, very seriously for investing the lecturers them. And also holding the lectures to high standards. It has come up a few times about lecturers not teaching the full curriculum, et cetera, et cetera. Standards they need for the, where for ensure say lecturer, they teach exam term. They conduct exam to a certain standards, et cetera, et cetera. Um, the students then need for get a room for they evaluate the lecturers there. This is something that's not rocket science, it happen now other country there. For let stood all man fail, now you class, it must be say, now so until you know they do right. I not say the student they not get issue problems, but for let person take joy for fail, everybody now in class, on a two person no more pass. It means say the lecturer have safe, safe, get for be held to, to certain standard. So I think say it's about, I'm saying you for invest in lecturers them, but I swear let the lecturer then do. Waiting they suppose for do, but now the university they say say go go for come up with any reason, they waiting for um. Hold these lectures then to high standards. Of course, the students then, students when not pay fees, I not able understand. Actually, I'm not for saying now, um, for block or whatever, now England me study. If I not pay school fee, I not they get service, I not they go now class, teacher not go teach me. You know what I mean? So if student, yes, there are issues, the economy we, where we day, now I make even this student loan scheme. Governments get for continue for sustaining, for fair ways, for work with the institution where they not set up for ensure see. It is sustained, so you go get more people go get access to education, but honestly. If the fees I make I say important, follow then consult with the student them, for let them go able for charge fees where go affordable. If you not pay, you not for, you see, you not, you for face the consequences. If you balance per exam or you want cheat, you for face the consequences. I think say these are issues they way, and also we don't, it's nothing new that we are saying. But let the university then be intentional in terms of putting things then in place for let lecturer, student too. Let all man face consequence if they not do what they, they suppose for do. Of course, we don't, the main reason also starts, now in terms of the fact say the university they, they owe now to themselves. For now, for think of ways for fund, because all of this now because money not they. You know, for put money in systems in place, you need money, for put systems in place, you need money. So we don't put onto the university, they say, who not come up with things they way. Um, go make clear, attract more funding. The endowment fund Professor Algarly talking, University of Salem, they are far advanced with that. But they need for complete and other universities then can piggyback on that for the, so that's why then they bucko, bucko they want give back to salon. But some man, not for just the same for a family, there are impacts on things then at the country, investments and projects a university they get. We can tap into that. This, as I said, the student loan scheme is one thing we could work with government, who go, who go try for sustain. Yes, government go always continue for fund the education. Then they, it then how we develop, it then had a development plan. But in the context of challenges with the fiscal situation. It's going to be difficult for just the pour more and more money. We go try, but what you meetings say government get for do. As I say, I start off with saying, we go for, go help who now for create their labeling environment. Yes, so we go help who now for come up with laws then, laws then, regulations. For example, this P P P O, they talk about private, public.
Private partnership.
Partnership, the laws are there, but maybe you not go applicable to universities, we can look into that, government go support who now for that day. Something then they go, go need some small initial funding from government, seed money, like who to help with student loan scheme. Governments will help for do that day. We go help who now for mobilize resources from donors, there are some donors, they wait, they get money, they not tag, there's things say that. Governments who go now, who not know sound now they put them, they would, they rather fund the sector directly. Universities can come up with things, projects where governments then go just serve as facilitator for, 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 for facilitate.
Thank you very much.
For attract more funding, so these are the things we do, we are committed. As I say, education will always be priority for government because of the developmental benefits, but waiting governments really want for help now. What we want focus the universities and for look to ways of alternate.
Thank you.
Funding and we go try for support. And we go try for support to now.
Thank you. So we get the next fifteen minutes, yeah, for so we can round up. After fifteen minutes there, Madam Minister, because you know the, uh, the previous one, you not say anything, and this was also say if you don't take notes. I think it fair that we gain five minutes for round up on all of them conversations there are. So between Professor Bamanja, Professor Edwin, I mean, Dr. Bamanja, Professor Edwin and Professor Algarly, you will not get ten minutes. Over to you, Professor Algarly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us start first, let us make a distinction between public and private universities. Public university, the government set them up, so government get full responsibility for them. Whereas private universities can be settled by some foundation or some group of persons or individual. We get money, we probably go for going to charity with causes, but some of they again are for, for profit. We give say most of the private universities they are, except maybe for one, they not get foundation or the background. We can ask government, if government, if get small funds, we like to support them, but for say you are in the government for pay salaries and this and that. Subvention, it will not. They can give you a small, uh, something. That, that's the distinction between the two. You know, they, over the years, particularly in the last three or so years, who they see increasing numbers, wanting to impact the university. Then get challenges, the university have challenges. And they not get infrastructure, they not get facilities, and this the impact on the quality of the institutions and the products. We not say at times, it's the ministry that they force them for take their high numbers there against this, uh, poor facilities. So the quality of the products them affected. I think the institution should be strong enough to say, no, we do not have the, we have it all for take that number of students, we can only take this. They should be strong enough, but I don't think they are strong enough. They don't, and the candidate say, when I take, then they take. Therefore, be careful with that. The lecturers them, they get responsibilities. They say, oh, me they, would they get plenty complaint and we are coming after you. Because we not so many they teach syllabus they don't. We not so someone, they teach at all. Now only two weeks to exam, when they come, don't like get exam. We pick then they fail, we don't like they talk say, no, they are the pick in a well, they are the pick are not better. Like I like I say, if you were to teach, you get sixty, seventy percent failure, so it go good, you say, definitely. So we are coming after you on that one. The courses them and the curriculum them, wisdom of the universities then they do. I mean, they not relevant to today's economic development and job opportunities. I, Kelly, I think so, I don't stop charity, eh? You are not stop charity, Greek and Roman culture, you are not stop a mess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Some of them curriculum, they not relevant anymore. We not doing things that will go, they go grow and develop this economy. Our last stock, because we not get much time, three years ago, we do a needs assessment studies of all institutions there. We came up with recommendation, it's a good document, four hundred pages document, we get a short version, which is about sixty, seventy pages. And the recommendations, we don't engage CBCP, we don't engage the DV system. We don't write things that when they can do, when not need money, but they have not taken on them. That again is something which we want for let we look at. We also know say, most of the institutions now get divergent admissions policies. The policies for admission, we get them and it was good yet. But I know now on a change them, some man they take weight in their leg, do weight in their leg, then would they talk say picking a do well. Then will fairly pick it, it's like some money not more institutions want now. And we should move away from that image, say now money will defend. No, not no money, we therefore provide a service and let it be quality service. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Professor Edwin.
Thank you very much. Since that my last, um, bite on this, I will say thanks to all for this opportunity because uh, I, I think say we owe unto each other. We did talk about we role as university and that, uh, when I, when I, when I they watch me students them. I feel the responsibility we get, what we get as lecturer them and as academics them to we students and because now they go for takeover from we. What's in with the give them, they represent we in the future. So, but, but in all of these, the car say, we still get for get this conversation going. One of, one of the role as, as institutions and now maybe strengthening the partnership between we and the private sector or the, I mean, it could be public, 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 private sector then. And I, I see the result where they come in, where, when you do then continually, if you actually they implement it. The second thing is, let me intensify, we research, where go be community driven and development driven. I've been there in our meeting with other vice chancellors in Nigeria, where they talk about now, not, not even, not just writing academic papers for make you get promotion. Now for get academic papers then, where they actually speak to issues them within the community. And, and, and by so doing, you can even get, even I mean, a promotion way beyond what you expect. And so, so now we roll that and I think say we for begin to remember that very seriously, instead of just thinking of, um, how we will get promoted quickly. Thirdly, we don't already mention them, say, we, the way we they teach, you know, you know, right? And we, we need for accept that. I, we, in the very, uh, prof, I mean, I mean, that, that, that member of the court, he don't see say with the fat me, we, we, we colleagues them. Because of what they happen, we will not, not too late for see. We owe unto we students them. I, I thi, I think this conversation, when we go back there, we really search yourself through and see how best we go change situations. We don't talk about, we don't talk about the endowment fund issue and it, 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 it can surprise me really when I, when I can sit around and say, yeah, we say, we get a lot of people and we want for fund, whether that diaspora. For me, that's lip service. They will rather go from both school, sorry both school people, when I, when I secondary school than for fund USL. It, it's, it's very sad. So when we, I mean, when we talk about establishing foundation, we establishing an endowment fund. Honestly, we the lip service no more. Let me come back and say, yes, we want for fund with institutions and with July University, just for close out. Some years ago, when the July University in the town fifty, we do all kinds in. By the time we they come for the real celebration, how many of women in there at the room? Less than twenty. Less than twenty. So we should actually be thinking, I mean, forward thinking and more, more so add on to what they happen with, um, with, with, uh, the word we come up from, the, the, the finance for say people and they. If they, they can play they, we need for save them, let we identify the men that can help we. On that note, we will go back, but we want to make this conversation continue.
Professor Edwin, uh, before I come to you, doctor, I notice I don't mistake plenty today, I don't call you professor. Not deny again, oh. No, you say say not deny again, oh, Shanti, I don't see something for you. So Shanti, for this one now, we will call you professor very soon. Uh, Professor Edwin, you don't say, you don't talk brilliantly today. Uh, but that both school example, I give, you understand me much not do do, both school example, you not recommend oh, bye tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh, I want go back, Madam Minister, they say, they are not used by building a house. And you know the foundation is very important. We want to hear happen at Fito recently, the collapse of that building. Well, at the tertiary level, now we they do the decoration, the, the painting, the beautification, okay? As a matter of fact, now we they give the final direction to the students in learning process, for they would be very useful in our society. Therefore, the task enormous, okay? But if the one they were they coming, look at a strong, what you take, for they paint and find, it means say you go for go back. And this are one of the reasons we make, there is a lot of failure, especially when students they come, they are one. Because they can just from secondary schools, some of them, majority of them, and they can still get that, you know what I mean? And for letting fit into university library, you have to catch up, they don't fail, won't fully before semester. For past other semesters, then I catch up on the place, so they are not really meeting. But again, what is the reason for this? Let me go back to the way we teach that we secondary schools, okay? Salam, up till now, we still believe in this competitive or individualist, all man for himself. That has to change. It tend on which way we say for things say, you begin there among myself, collaboratively, cooperatively can learn if the teacher, the lecturer guide them well. This is even more difficult than we leave and for let learn for himself. Because that's what you go to, that's what we do. You go in a class, you give your hand out, you say one, two words, you guys go do research, you go and develop it. We are not helping them construct the knowledge. They just go and grab it and come back and present her. Now in the world of AI, it's going to be even worse, even worse. Lecturers know already in the classroom, now where you give assignments, if you remember, they have, they get the smartphones all around. So they get easy to go to AI, chat, chat, smart GPT, bam. Copy and paste. I'm not saying AI is wrong, but develop your idea, then send it in to the fine tune. Then you get a moral grounds for claim the idea there. When you just go take all that person you then put up, it's plagiarism, thank you. Madam Minister, now, I want to thank you, the ministries, everybody involved for this. As prof say, this are just the beginning, we need more of this. And we say a lot of minds, they think of what is the next step? What's the next step? What can we do? We ready for cooperate and make sure say, we bring the level of education who say we want later. But we say for say, we get for make the sacrifice, government get for make sacrifice, all stakeholders get for make sacrifice. But most importantly, the students then get for be ready and the parents then get for be prepared also for support the students. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Uh, before the minister round up now and give, uh, parting words then, I will take one thirty seconds comment for the minister. Right? And the ministry. Chancellor, yes. Professor Gival, can it be in thirty seconds, sir? We're pressed for time. When I call the mic for Professor, when I call the mic for Professor Gival.
Yes, I want for make a few ceiling points. Number one is tertiary education commission. I don't talk to you several times, you need for put up a robust mechanism for monetary evaluation. Some of the courses within the other universities are not fit for purpose. You need for go there all the time. I not say you are handicapped with finances, but you get for look for the money. That is one. Number two, we need a centralized university admission policy. Another cast has passionate than anybody, but I think some of the results who they get. They create a situation who say in a garbage in and garbage out. And then finally, the university students. The law they provide for involvement or university students in the university administration. They are on university court, at times looking, appointer, F and GPC, and also the standard, studying committees of the colleges. I shall say if their leaders, they really attend these meetings and put their points across. A lot of these problems really they come, we, they pay for this, we know they get a, they be highlighted there and they will be solved. I did talk this in the capacity of Chancellor of July University. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Professor Gival. Uh, I see the woman, Yan at the back. No, 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 not to you, not to you, ma. The next one. Yes.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Moderator. I just want for use this opportunity for say a very, uh, big thank you to the Ministry of Higher and Technical Education. Um, Dr. Ramatulai Rui and Mr. Sajaziz Kamara and team for putting this together. And the theme say the cost of quality higher education, now a collective responsibility. I think say collective responsibility meaning that we for not invite parents, but I come as a parent. Because we became then don't attend this, um, institution. But to the minister and the ministry, I just want for say, um, many years ago, they say FBC was the Athens of Africa. Where are we now? It is a competitive world. Let we use we, this campus, this university, for make them for be visually appealing to students and parents. But I want for let we compare, for example, Ibadan University and Jimpah.
Thirty seconds.
Yes. Let, so let we not get money, let we get money at the university, how for create the money innovation. Make a very high-tech, affordable internet services and, um, facilities. For example, for bring the money come at the university. If you make them, people then bound for use them, if it work well, as long as not the orange or Afisal. Give them a, a different face. I think say down they go really work. But then they say, when you talk by the dog, not forget for talk by the bone. Lecturers and students alike, do your part, play your part. So bring a meaningful institution back to the limelight. Thank you.
Thank you. We get one more female voice now, yeah, the lady with the hat. Oh, now all where the student loan scheme hat eh? Other advertiser, I'm not plenty, let pull her now. Uh, we will talk the balance after this program.
Many I see, I can't, many I check up the same for the loan scheme, board of trustees. First of all, I want to thank me ministry for organize this wonderful event today, now Fritown Public College in particular. Um, I guess so many things, but I want for focus on.
Do it in thirty seconds.
One thing, which is, strong recommendation that this, um, event be replicated up country. We need with district council chair people them for there, with parliament chief for there, women's leaders for there, comrade them for there. May they not say, this government is ready for help begin them education. Is ready for fund the education for them begin them, but now so much they going for do. The parents have for help the principal them, they have for help the university them, now cannot accommodate. May we, we people then not say, that cannot university, not to, they not have a seat on me, people they not for seat on, so they wait for government for do everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. So before we come, thank you. Before we come to, uh, uh, the minister, I will get some few slides in. When I do that quick for you, uh, so that minister could just put all it in a one pot and give a response and then after which I think, now me and Big Brother Sajad Aziz, now the deputy minister, now I go can give the, the closing cortis after, uh, the minister don't talk. So, uh, the first question, so you think can universities run on tuition fees alone? Uh, now just on snap poll, uh, seventy-seven percent say no. Hmm? Seventy-seven percent say no, universities not go run on tuition fees alone. Twenty-three percent say yes. So meaning, I, I, I think say this conversation necessary in terms of uh, financing model, private sector involvement, public, private partnership as, uh, the master's habit person at the Ministry of Finance don't say and all of them today. Uh, the second one, now how expensive is it to run universities? Uh, eighty-two percent say very expensive. moderately expensive fourteen percent, not expensive five percent. So you see, I mean, in tune with this conversation I have today. For running universities, very expensive. So, uh, what is now the best way for finance public universities? Eighty-two percent say all of the above, all of the above, meaning I think say government, private investment, donor grants, tuition fees and all of them today. Eighty-two percent say all of the above. But we break and done, government subvention nine percent, uh, private investment five percent, uh, donor grants five percent and tuition fees zero percent. So, uh, basically now sample of some of the, the polling the whole gets. Uh, what recommendation do you believe can make the cost of quality education more substantial? Uh, so it in reduce tuition fees, increase government subsidies or. Say it in, reduce tuition fees, increase government subsidies, or scholarships to students, public-private partnership to fund education, educational institutions, three, in some cases, expanding online and distance learning options to reduce infrastructure cost, four, offering flexible payments plans for tuition fees, five, reducing non-academic fees or unnecessary cost, tertiary institutions to engage innovative schemes that may lead to reasonable revenue generation. May I not better, I tell you now, it's more smart than the, I just go with it up. What recommendations do you believe can make the cost of quality education, oh, not the same, okay. So basically, this is not some of the views that will get aligned, we don't have to aggregate them for now. I'll go pass the mic over to the Honorable Minister for giving your intervention, and then, I think Deputy Minister Sajaziz stand by for give closing cortis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, the conversation we don't get today, very, very interesting. And as I say earlier, it give you an opportunity for pause, reflect, and raise the bar. In reflecting, all the stakeholders, they for self-reflect. So I gladly news, don't realize say we not create this platform for point finger at students, we not create this platform for point finger at anybody. Now for all man no say they get role for play, for no move the sector forward. So all man need for self-reflect, as much as we can self-reflect at institutional level, stakeholder level, let all man self-reflect as well. So the two questions where the panel then discuss, it therefore do the impact of sustainable financing on community and students and the role of universities in quality education. We all know the core functions of university, teaching, research, community service. Recently, I engage with me counterpart as Zimbabwe, now I say that should not be the case. It's all for include innovation and industries into the core function of university. So why I read the point where Mr. Katta make about the private sector, we know say the private sector, we cannot move into industrialization without the private sector. We need the private sector for be key partner, so we don't note the point for say there should be pattern parcel of this dialogue. And we also know so we need for ensure say the curriculum, we not for train mismatch. I already talked earlier about the labor market survey we don't do for some sectors, and we plan for leverage upon the labor market survey where the Ministry of Employment, Labor and Social Security therefore do, follow see how we can expand and the. And we also therefore see how we therefore make sure so young people able to get job, because ultimately, now they think how they therefore contribute to community, they therefore be gainfully employed. So therefore support the youth employment scheme, we go lead to social development within the social space, with socioeconomic development, and I don't want, I don't want for continent, I don't want for young people them. In doing so, but putting then don't come up, we already establish say the universities they need for do more in terms of generating funds internally. I like the point where somebody makes say they for do the business ventures, they for link to something where they of national significance. So the national development plan, now good starting point, for let the universities and begin see how they can position themselves for support the country in national development plan. Because we therefore create better linkage between we ministries, we departments and we agencies, and we universities them, in the area of industrialization, in the areas of business venture, in the area of research. Within the ministry, we already don't start for see how we can create better linkage between we universities and research. We don't like to all the ministries and ask them, what is not the contemporary issues on a the grapple with within our sector? We will get that information, though they collect and by sector and send on to the relevant universities them. And say where the students then go to their final year and they therefore do research, the research question for be linked to this, then gaps here where we don't identify. Where young faculty members they want for do research, for build their capacity, they need for the design and research around their issues there, so where the government ministries they don't say, now and they deal with now, then they go help we for create better linkage between the universities and the ministries. We also therefore develop a national research and innovation and policy, we go provide the guidance at national level, and the universities then can see how they can align for support that agenda there. And we don't hear some suggestion then for say, government for invest more. Governments already they invest a lot into universities there. Yes, I agree say there's a lo- long way for go, but it's not a government responsibility no more, the theme collective responsibility. Governments can invest, but also the institutions they also need for invest, institutional investment, institutional ownership. What you invest in, you protect them. So there's so many things that we can discuss, going back to research, when a one key driver where universities then can use for generate more funds, how universities then can put together a capacity building grant, fund, where young lecturers them, early career researchers then can tap into, apply for small money, seed money, then do small research, they use and if apply for bigger grant, we go come to the university and increase the research portfolio within the university. So this now, all thing that we will need for sit down and talk about. And in the area of quality, quality now they can't ship, and they can't ship at all. And for we as a ministry, it involves say, creating the enabling environment for the young people. Then they entail say for get the equipment them, the laboratory them, we match with the curriculum model review, we link to the labor market survey. We lecturers then for be capacitated for deliver the curriculum, then for now for operate the equipment them, then forget soft skills embedded the word and they train the young people. Yesterday, Iday I PAM, then launch something on social enterprise, how young people them, we can train them for be entrepreneurs, where ultimately, what we want and follow young people able to get job, let the country go before. So, how we can leverage upon public-private partnership, how we can be very deliberate and intentional for build the capacity of we lecturers there. And I get to commend me vice chancellors on principles them, across the board, both public and private, therefore commend T C and the ministry. Recently, we embark on a major task, I'm not going for talk now, I keep them close to me chest, but we identify a problem where Dr. and Professor Al Ghali do already mention, and we can together for put together a very, very ambitious proposal for seek for funding, for try for address that there. And me now very optimistic person, when we get them, I continue for pre for you, when we get them, it will change the research landscape and capacity building for universities there. And somebody make a point, I believe Dr. Gebbe make the point about, we need for link more with the Ministry of Basic and Senior Secondary Education. So what we would do, within the ministry, both ministries, we say one sector, two ministries, we cannot afford for working silos, and we know they working silos. Now we they train the teacher them, where they go teach now the schools them. So we get that platform though we collaborate, we are, where I say yes, and they teach artificial intelligence at that level. AI not tool, not tool, we they work with T C, we already get a discussion therefore see how we can come up with a policy for AI in education, ethical use of AI in education. So, not to thing we know, we not a, we not aware of, we don't, we no being say we need for, ensure say there is continuity. We can use the platform we get to bilateral relations, we get to continue, they give us scholarship, for see how we can get we young graduates them, for they then go go train in their field, and not to just AI, machine learning, robotics, all their field and the way they emerge, so they come back, they can be the trainers, they can be the lecturers, and for curriculum we go don't deliver. So we are aware of that there, but I glad you bring that point there. So, all this we don't discuss, so, not to follow just talk about the problems, it should be solution driven. The deputy minister will come tell we what is not the call to action, what is not the solutions there, we don't put, don't come out of this engagement. And for me, certain things then come out, policies. We need for come up with policies at ministry level in collaboration with stakeholders, and we cannot work in silos, informed by context-specific evidence, and we also need for strength in systems, two side and they we strengthen, and one side and not they we develop them. Financial management systems, how we therefore work with Ministry of Finance, and we not therefore deviate from the public financial management systems, where they get, how we therefore develop governance, strengthen governance systems within the universities. Because for the recent lecturers, and they only go lecture two weeks before exam allegedly, then we therefore see how the governance systems within the universities are strengthening. We get vice chancellors, we get D V Cs, we get deans, we get heads of departments, we get lecturers, how we the strengthening and for let then they not be, how they use technology for improve upon that there, how we the monitor and evaluate, and use the learning from their exercise and therefore further improve upon we say. Not to thing we would shy away from as a ministry. So therefore create more of these platforms, so let we get these realistic conversations there, we in a way they hold we accountable, because we don't talk the problem, but we don't come up with potential solutions, and we work together for address them problems there also. And we go replicate this at district level, at regional level, because the conversation not to for here no more. The other stakeholders there where somebody be mentioned, I believe the parents them, the, there's another group of stakeholders we mentioned, we in, yes, the traditional leaders, we invite them all, but we they go meet them now, and we they carry the conversation go to them. And this thing is being stayed live, we talk and pancreo, so even the, anybody where they listen to this go understand what we talk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think say we don't almost come to the end, and we then yeah, they now, Dr. Ela talk about how we go, I think, I said to you, I mean then I me mind there as you talk, how we go hit lecturers them, hmm? That's a great here on this country. Again, you boogie traps them, because all to a fool, the moment you question anything as it relate to lecturer, if you not take tell you the fail, that you go for, you know they get on this country. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not being, not for all, it is not for all, these are honest, we don't talk about honest, frank and candid conversations then I am, not all, my own vice chancellor, he's very, very interactive, every time I catch me on campus, now they ask me, is everything okay? So there are exceptions.
Moderator, sir.
We no say for the most part.
I know I like talk too much, but let you worry. I don't maintain the peace.
Are you calm?
A lot of things.
But I'm not the moderator, you know, left me now.
I see all man they talk, but if we count the other side of the coin.
Okay.
I'd tell you say, ninety-nine point nine percent of the picking and I me class, who they talk about?
Doctor Gebbe.
They not they ever pass mass.
Doctor Gebbe.
That is fact, is that the fault of the lecturer?
We will not go back again.
So let we leave there today.
I am telling.
Let we drink water, let we not look on there, talk some tea more lecture at the no more, forget about that.
Thank you.
There are a lot of arrows along the line, we need error analysis, please.
I am simply saying, I am simply saying, without being critical to you, right, that it therefore be part of the conversation, how do we? Yeah? Before frankly get a conversation around what is not feedback on meeting students than think about lecturers, yeah? Simple and straightforward. Deputy Minister, closing cortis. Not all to you, we talk now, you need for like, you know, but we therefore tolerate the conversation and therefore move forward. Doctor Gebbe, it has to be noted.
Thank you, moderator. I think Fambulem, I tell you now, plenty, plenty, thank you, I tell the panelists then plenty, thank you. I think this town hall alert we or more or less, it make we wake up to what is not the role of university in nation building towards sustainable development. And I think we clearly don't able for establish that from this morning to this afternoon in three hours. We acknowledge also say, we take note of the facts say, we not be able for look at all the issues them and come with the action points them. But when we set out for this town hall, we be very clear about the outcomes they will be one for achieve. One, for let increase your understanding of the state of school, what's going on, what's happening, and how resilient we have been, you know, with the sort of leadership we getting at the country, in His Excellency retired, breaking the Julius Mother Bill, the leadership of the ministry, and the leadership of the sector, that include the education sector, the universities then both private and public, how they not able for embrace this vision say, we need for build on the human capital development. So I think we able for appreciate that. I think when the minister speak, he speak clearly to the issues them, the topic today, quality higher education, the cost of higher education, pointing to the fact that now we all business, we don't talk about the fact say we need for look inward. We no say there had been missed opportunities as a country, for we able for create the investment, I mean, the right resources for invest in with people them going forward. We don't get the right, wrong priorities, then that's a missed opportunity, but I think today we they say, not to government no more we therefore look up, to we need for look inside, transparency, accountability, open up some other avenues then for investment. And I think as a result of this town hall, we therefore piece the report together, you know, but also, we deserve better, we demand better, we demand transparency, we demand accountability, that we should be globally competitive as well. The education we this strive for is not about serial union, it's about being globally competitive, it's about preparing the young people, let the ministers talk, prepare our young people, that wherever they go in the world, they can be competitive, but we have given ourselves a responsibility to say we have a shared ownership in moving this forward. On that note, I want let the panelists then join me for thank the whole country for they don't listen to me and the one they wait they will turn at this hall by standing and clapping for them. When I wake up, and the people that wait they listen to me. When I kiss it on, when I kiss it on. Now, I want we the audience them, for when we thank the panel for being so open, honest and sincere in this Fambule talk this afternoon, clap for them also. The Ministry of Information and Civic Education, Minister Siba, for giving away this opportunity and offering in whole services then for make this possible, lot clap for them also. I can tell you, you know, so I sat there thinking, sustainable financing, I think. How you happen for get this town hall? And we appreciate the questions, the concerns, the suggestions, but the conference of vice chancellors and principals, there's six universities there, including we baby Konno University of Science and Technology, now then put money together for let get this event possible, and the kind support of the Ministry of Information and Civic Education. Single-handedly, I became a bank manager, like my office became, and they were coming, like putting the money together and we've managed it and we report on it, you know, in a transparent manner. But we no say, we would not have been alert to this process if President Bill not be wake up in twenty eighteen, say we think we have done so well, but there's a lot more to do. I think President Bill deserve a round of applause. I think we have been shown the light on the way forward, and I think we have to move on. I thank you very much, and have a blessed day.
On that note, Salih Allah Muhammad, peace and blessing be unto you. May you go in peace.